Good evening, and calling the Board of Selectment meeting for October 27th, 22nd, 2024 to order at 6:31, actually, yeah, 6:31 PM. First item of business, Secretary's report from October 8th and the special meeting for September 27th. You guys have a chance to review those minutes.
May I make a motion that we approve the report from October 8th and the special meeting of September 27th?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. First audience is citizens. We have quite a few people here tonight. Anyone like to address the board at this time?
I would. I'm not getting the notifications anymore on the board meetings. I don't know what happened. I tried to sign in again and ask for them, and I'm still not getting them.
I think that would be better directed at the town clerk. You did mention that, so signing back in didn't work? Because other people have noticed that.
I don't get them. I've tried three or four times. I don't get them.
I don't know what's going on with that. I'll ask Amy tomorrow to see if other people have called in, but you're not the only one that I've heard that from, and I don't know why, but the system periodically dumps people out or something.
I was thinking you didn't want me to show up.
Oh, no. No, I have nothing to do with that, so, but I'll ask the town clerk about that. Well, good to see you tonight, so, there you go. So you never got them back in?
Never. I've tried three separate times to get back on, so.
Have you?
I didn't know you weren't getting them either. Well, something's up.
Well, I know that they were switching over something with our software a while ago, so maybe somehow.
I haven't gotten them since February. So it makes an extra effort to come, you know? Sometimes I miss something. Whatever.
All right, I will look into that.
Thank you.
So next item was update to drainage issue on Oak Ridge Drive. The homeowner is here, but I had the ability, the opportunity to stop out there Sunday. Again, sorry, I was just driving by. But the contractor looked like he had completed all the work in the yard. He was coming back to seed today. Did he make it back today?
No, they talked, they left out the road today. Said they're coming back Wednesday night to seed.
Okay.
I had a little concern about how high the drain was set, but they're telling me I'm fully doing it, so.
Okay, well, I guess we'll watch that next time it rains, right? But that's good to hear, that he got the road done.
The only questions I had is on those, on the bid that went out, there were some specific things that were supposed to be in the bid that the homeowners aren't getting. The fence was supposed to be taken down and put back up, which they're being told is not doing it?
He said it's not in the scope of work, and honestly, I have to say this, my sister foolishly took part of the fence down before he came out, but after the bid process. And then he also bent a lot of holes that were in the ground, getting them out. And again, my sister foolishly said, he said, "I'm having trouble," and she said, "Just get them." So, you know, I don't know how much I can hold him accountable for, unfortunately.
First that, we'll go back to my comments two weeks ago, that we need to have a written procedure and policy in effect when these bids come out, so there's no misunderstanding of what is part of the scope of the project.
And I also sent you some suggestions in that regard from citizens' point of view for that and project management, because both are missing.
Torsten, might we want to set a special meeting, just a workshop to do process design for this?
Well, I would like to, that's not a bad idea. I've been talking to Amory Ryan, our finance director, and she is trying to set up a lot of those policies. So we do have a RFP that came in for work for the Main Street Design Project, you know, the master plan? And I have that up with Amory to review, so we're gonna try to come up with a very standardized RFP process. And so it definitely is gonna be talked about, and maybe a committee, you know, of us meeting the Board of Selectmen kind of to review. But at this point, I think we'll kind of keep it internal for a few more days of checking what she already has on her desk.
Now, the normal process on this would be that if there were a concern of something such as the fence, it would go to Eric, and then that's how it would be handled?
Well, in this case, Eric and Dick Leighton both had hands in that scope of work, so I'd say that they should both address this to see that initial scope of work. I don't think we really saw the Board of Selectmen. We were verbally told about it. That's my understanding way back when. So I, but I did think the fence was included too, again, in a conversation, but I didn't know if it was in writing, so.
Well, there's one more thing that's still outstanding too, and that's the pumps and the cement that they didn't use is still on the property, so it needs to go. I've been saying that for a long time. It needs to go.
Well, I did speak to Eric about that, and he was gonna get out there in the next few days to take away the catch base and tops, and is that all going?
The pumps.
Right. But he really wanted to have your contractor kind of done, so he wouldn't be in his way, so.
No.
And the pumps, great. So everything will leave. Well, thank you for that report, Lisa. And I'll check with Dick and Eric on the fencing.
Is there a phone for this meeting too? I don't know, Jonathan Lambert? He was supposed, he said he was gonna be here, but.
Well, I have it on Zoom here, and I don't have anyone waiting to get in.
Oh, okay. Well, he's just concerned about his end of the thing. I guess he talked to Dick and Eric about finishing it, so it's not gonna wipe out his yard.
Right, and I was able to talk to him Sunday as well, when it was out. He came over.
Yeah, he just wanted to know.
I know, spoke to Catherine, and so I think John seemed pleased with what our next action was gonna be on his behalf, so, but thank you.
Yeah, no, he just talked to me today about not gonna go to the meeting, so.
Have we finalized how far, if the pipe will extend, or is that something, you're waiting for input from Eric?
I spoke to Eric yesterday. He was gonna contact John and figure out what the lateral would be to extend it a little more, and it was fine with our weapons enforcement officer who'd gone out there.
That's good. And did you check with Jane Marsh about getting an easement for that?
I did not. I don't know if we need an easement for that.
I believe we do, because it's town property going over private property.
I will ask, but I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Because the town, I think, owns so much, and we've got people on now.
Well, the other thing, sorry to interrupt again, but the covers on the drains, I spoke to Dick about it when he was last out. He said that's not in the scope of Winter Construction's work, but that it would be taken care of. So I happened to find a nice one that does what I wanted, so that it throws debris off to the side, comes to a point. So I sent that today to all you guys, just this afternoon, so Dick and Eric as well.
Oh, yeah, I glanced on my phone. My emails are just coming on my phone now, not on my computer. So is that where the plunge pool is?
Unien, unien, but they'll divert any leaves or branches.
A lot of branches.
So it won't clog them.
Plus there's that big tree that fell on the property of the hill.
Right, right. So Joy, we have two people online.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that. Anything else on Oak Ridge? You wanna contribute to the minutes? Folks, no? Catherine, please?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so the next thing I have on here is early voting and Election Day, and I just really wanted to remind folks, so people that are online can know, and the audience is citizens, of course, but if you're watching this on Sunday night, or whenever you're gonna watch, just remember we have early voting that goes from October 21st to the 31st, from 10 to 6:00, and then 11:01 to 11:03. And then on two days, 10:29 and 10:31, so yes, Halloween, we have late voting, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And all the voting is at the community room at the library. So early voting is just like Election Day voting, you vote in person, so it's not absentee. It's a little different, so.
Have we had any turnout so far?
Yes. I went yesterday and voted. Actually, I have the numbers from yesterday. Couple hundred, close to 300 voted the first day. Yeah, it was very smooth.
Yeah, great turnout compared to last year. We had, I think, one or two on the first day. Okay, so tax refunds. I had, got notice from the tax collector. She has five tax refunds totaling $393.16. So I need a motion to approve the tax refunds for the tax.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Transfer Station Committee report. So I had an opportunity to sit down with some of the members of the Transfer Station Committee yesterday. Wasn't an official meeting, they had just come to visit me, and they kept coming in, so all of a sudden we had four people. But basically, they are, have done their enforcement up there, and it went, you know, we had some glitches with the staff and the workers, you know, a little conflict there. But for the most part, it, the goal was established, or goal was achieved of enforcing that we needed stickers. So when they started on October 2nd and finished maybe last week, so they did two weeks, and I think thirty, 230 stickers were given out in that time. So here at the town clerk's office and up at the transfer station. So quite a few people were reached, got the message they needed their stickers. So the plan is that they're going to back off with that, and then maybe we'll see how the numbers look and everything, and maybe they'll pick another week to go out, November, December, something like that. So now they're gonna work on the transfer station ordinance that we asked them to, that solid waste ordinance. They came in and got the copy of the codified one from the town clerk's office. So they're gonna kind of compare, and then see what we wanna add and what we wanna take out, and kind of move that forward with like some, you know, town, public meetings or whatever, just so people can see what language is getting changed and that sort of thing. So they're gonna still meet monthly, but right now they're just gonna be sort of working on paperwork, that kind of thing, behind the scenes.
With reference to the ordinance drafting, Carol, did we get, have any progress on finding somebody?
I talked to CCM twice, and they're working on finding me somebody. So nobody has gotten back to me yet, but I did talk to them twice, and they thought it was a great idea. They said, "Well, that's a good idea, that's a good thought," you know, whatever, so.
So they're done checking stickers, checking people coming in? That's done for now?
Right now, for like that volunteer enforcement group.
May pick up again, you say?
That, that's the plan. I said, "Okay, so you've done a great job, let's cool it off." And, you know, the staff is up there and perfectly able to do that, so the staff can go back. And I, when I stopped up on Sunday, every car that came in had stickers, so it was really, I think.
I just messaged you.
Oh, yeah, did you?
Yeah.
So I thought, it's definitely, you know, gotten to the people that didn't really, probably a lot of them didn't realize they needed a sticker, or had forgotten to get it, or whatever, so.
So do you think in feedback to the team, if you can diplomatically, but directly, let Lenore know? I've received several comments about her in specific, specifically about an aggressiveness in interacting with the public. So if they, if you can diplomatically share that.
Oh, yeah.
And observe some training. So if we go to the next step, if it's gonna be in a month, or double check in six weeks, whatever, that it can be just a touch lighter.
Yeah.
I was about ready to say the same thing, because I was gonna say it's a good time to let things die down, cooler heads prevail, because I got in a lot of phone calls and face-to-face with people, and let things, they did a wonderful job checking. They got rid of a lot of stickers, if you wanna call it that way, for people in compliance, but it, it was getting out of hand, and before something bad happens to someone, let's, let it cool down.
Yeah, that was the general comments yesterday, and so everybody's in agreement, and they have a lot of work to do. We gave them quite a task of coming up with different priorities up there and stuff, so they have plenty of volunteer work to do behind the scenes, so. So all those comments have been heard, so thank you. Okay, affordable housing update on the progress. So I put that on the agenda. It was something that we were talking about last month, or two weeks ago, I guess. We meet more than once a month.
Just feels like a month.
We do have a meeting, so Dan Smith from Daniel Smith, who's on the planning and zoning, also serves on the Regional Housing Authority Committee with Rivercog. He actually did reach out to Ben Joy, gentleman at the state, and he did set up a meeting for next week, so we'll meet with him and see what he can do to help us kind of maneuver, you know, guide us. But Tony did come back. Tony's here tonight planning the zoning.
Before we jump into that, Carol, on a go-forward basis, can I ask that Dwayne and I be copied on those sort of meetings? Because we weren't in the loop on that.
Right, but that particular meeting was gonna be just for informational on small scale. I think if we make it a public, if we make it a special Board of Selectment meeting, then it's open to the public, so I wanna.
No, I don't see it as a special meeting, but I'd like to know about the, that's how you learn and grow, by being able to attend these meetings, and things like a lot of them are happening.
If you attend the meeting, it has to be a posted Board of Selectment meeting, which means it's open to the public. So I don't know if the state gentleman wants to be presenting at a public meeting, or if he just wants a small, like, working meeting. So I'm gonna touch base.
I have no problem with the first one, but if going forward, if there's more meetings, I would like to.
Oh, absolutely. I just didn't.
The first one has.
I think it's worth posting. It's, you know, it's a big issue impacting our town, so.
Well, he was just coming to give deeper guidance.
Yeah.
We can't do questions.
I was just gonna jump in.
Go ahead.
So he did, he was coming to the town, so he's looking for information from the town to set up a meeting, so we can have a public hearing.
Okay.
So that is, that's all it really was. He was coming here, "What are your needs?", and we'll set something up to the town.
Sounds good.
So moving forward, we'll have a bigger.
Yep.
Okay. But thank you for the statement. We will read that. Okay, next thing, current vacant positions and new hires, and propose new positions. So we had talked about new positions being maybe a facilities manager, zoning enforcement officer, but I haven't worked out what that would look like as far as hours. I was gonna bring it up to the Board of Finance tonight in general terms. That's what, when I spoke to Bud earlier, he said, "Just, you know, kind of let's bring it up generally, we don't have any specifics right now."
Carol, regarding the facilities manager, I've been thinking that we, we might use someone on a part-time basis. I didn't realize it would be a manager, that this would be, we're just calling it that, or is it more of a worker?
We're just calling it that.
Okay, but it's the function.
And I, I think we have the same thought, like, it would be a part-time handy, handy person. So they could identify things, you know, we could have our priorities, but then they actually could maybe do a lot of the work themselves. So we wouldn't be contracting out, waiting for.
That's one thing I'd like us to have a special meeting on when we get closer to that, to try to figure out where we think the work needs to be done.
Oh, right, right. And then, oh, we're still, the park and rec director position, we had three applications, and I've been trying to get the park and rec, a couple members to get their interview committee together. So we have still not hired, we have not even interviewed, but we do have some applicants that, the couple that I've seen look qualified, so I think, even though it's a small pool, and then I believe somebody actually sent something in yesterday, so we might be up to four, so, so that's still open. The finance position was filled. We have a new employee that started yesterday, and.
Who is that?
Her name is Tara, but I don't know her last name.
Is that full-time or part-time?
That's part-time?
Part-time.
Yeah, and the assessor, I think she gave, offered to somebody, and that would be the full-time assistant for the assessor. I think there was one more I had on here, maybe there's just a grants person that we keep talking about. Facilities zoning.
We're looking for a zoning enforcement officer.
I think we need a zoning enforcement officer.
So is this something that we would be putting in next year's budget, or you're looking for an exception now?
Well, we're gonna see, we're gonna see, I wanted to do a little research to see what Kathy Jefferson used to, you know, our zoning, past zoning enforcement officer, how many hours a week she worked here. It's not a full-time position.
I know you want me to jump in, but is it the same number of hours that we have at key? If she actually had a slight bit, so she got a little bit more money.
Oh, so just six hours a week?
Yep.
Yeah.
Just curious, who requested, are you guys requesting that, or feel a little blindsided by that, that's all.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I, it's something that I, I've talked to, when talking to Zoe, you know, there doesn't seem to be a lot of enforcement, a lot of teeth, we don't, we're missing teeth behind our regulations.
They need more hours.
So we need.
These are not zoning enforcement officers, if I have any idea on that.
Okay.
So it's, I think it's an hour thing, you know, there's just not enough time to do that.
Well, you're correct on that. I mean, I would agree with that, so. So maybe then instead of zoning enforcement, we up the hours that we have our zoning person here, but that has to be looked at. We have a lot of those properties that we've been talking about, blighted properties, and we just don't have the teeth behind our regulations, it seems.
I actually would like to talk to you about that after this meeting.
Okay. Okay, so that's all my report on that. Anything else? Okay, incubator property. So we've been talking about the possible sale of those two lots. So the first thing as Selectmen we have to do is move that forward to a town meeting, because that's not a discussion we can make. And then if at the town meeting it gets voted to sell the properties, we would then RFP, I guess, for a real estate agent to list those. And then it would be by sealed bid and all that kind of stuff. So I guess I put it on here just to see if you two wanted to move this forward.
I do. Do you need a motion? I move that we move forward to a town meeting, first the Board of Finance, then to a town meeting, the concept of selling the two pieces of property at Incubator Park, Industrial Park.
All right, can I have a second?
Oh, second, we've been down that road.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we do have to have a town meeting end of year, or before end of year, like before December 1st, because we do have to appoint, reappoint all our reappointments. So I thought that would be a good time to put that on the same town meeting, because we have some planning and zoning people to reappoint, CHC people, you know, that sort of thing.
If we move forward with selling, is there a minimum, do we have an idea what these parcels are worth?
We don't, but I don't have to know, we don't have to know that to move it forward, because then we'd get the realtor, and they would give us the.
I don't think we have some sense from Robin, from the assessor.
Yeah, we have a sense of what they're worth, but we haven't looked now for what market value would be, so that would be where the flux might be.
Okay.
Okay, so I will put that on the town meeting coming up. I apologize for my, I have like allergy attacks, clearing my throat. All right, so town hall building update. I did speak to Dick yesterday, and downstairs is pretty clean, you know, it's all cleaned out, as you know, it's pretty dry. He said the next steps would be to get electrical in and kind of put up some real lights, because right now it's all kind of makeshift, and we do have to, for OSHA, we have to have everything, all the exits well, well signage, and, you know, well marked, and right now they are not. So that would be the next step, and then he'd also, right now we have our big dehumidifiers down there, and they're being, they belong to ServiceMaster, whoever did the work. So we're gonna have to get those pulled out eventually, and then come up with our own scope for what's, what's needed down there mechanically speaking. So that's the update I have.
Do we need to put anything in priority order for Dick to move forward on, or for us to present as a cost to Board of Finance? Is there anything you need from the two of us?
Well, Dick said he was gonna get the electrical done first, so that we have well, it's well lit down there for any other future work. So I think once we get, I'll talk to Dick about who he's, bring it in for electrical, find out the money that we need.
Do we have a rough estimate?
So we have a rough estimate, but right now we don't have that rough estimate. But those are the steps he wants to take.
So electrical first, and then?
Electrical first. Because then we'd also be OSHA compliant, we can get the exit. Some of those exit signs have to be hardwired, or they can't just be signs.
And then the dehumidifiers, are we thinking?
I think that'll be the next step. He's gonna leave those down there until the electrical gets done, so the lighting is better, and then we'll figure out if we need new AC and the dehumidifiers, then we'll kind of get a better price tag, once he has companies come in.
So he'll be doing that?
He said he would take that on, yes.
Before we get into audience, I just wanted to say something before we get there. So two, two questions, one question, one comment. Where are we on the transfer, the solar panels? Are we hooked up and running yet?
We are not hooked up yet. They are getting hooked up soon, I guess, because they're, they've sent me another thing to sign for the payment piece.
Okay, and that was my second question. Is that coming in as a one lump sum payment per year, or is it gonna come in a monthly payment, or a quarterly payment?
I haven't confirmed that. My understanding was that it was gonna be a monthly payment.
Okay. Which my next thing I would like to bring up at the Board of Finance later on, I would like to see that go into a special, its own line item, to start building a fund for future green projects that may come down the road, instead of just throwing it into our general fund and have it get lost. It's just my two cents.
Okay, I'll check on the monthly versus the year.
But again, we're getting $43,000 a year, so dump it into a separate line item, and maybe there's something else down the road that we may wanna do something green.
Okay, well, that's a good suggestion. And then once, can we report back at the next meeting to exactly when, if we're getting it yearly or monthly, and then we can discuss what we wanna present to the Board of Finance for where to put that money? Does that sound reasonable?
Yep.
Catherine, you on board?
Yes. I might take a different point of view on whether it goes into a green fund, but there's plenty of time to discuss it.
Yeah.
Into a separate fund that we can use.
Separate fund for something.
Something, versus just throwing it into the general fund and you get, it's mixed up.
Agreed on that.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll put that on. Okay, then number 12, audience of citizens. We do have some people online, or I have another person online who's joined, so I have three. Would anyone online like to address the board? Are they muted? Can anyone online hear me? Yeah, I mean, I'm on, so I think we're good. Okay, I have no one online that wants to speak. So anyone here in the audience? Bob?
First of all, I'd like to point the deeper fire department for, like, two weeks ago on Sunday, we had a fire at the transfer station. I wanna thank them for their quick response, and I think they well deserve it.
Thank you. Yeah, good job, guys. Yes, Gary?
I went out to the transfer station Sunday and got my sticker for my company truck. And they said that I have to come to the town hall in January to get it going?
Well, so we had some, what they called, exceptions to the rule, and because they were a little complicated, somebody had, you know, a company truck, a leased vehicle, that kind of thing. So any of those exceptions to, you're a resident, you pay taxes, here's your registration, like a simple, they said, "Just send them to the town clerk, so Amy will give you your sticker." And we were just trying to make it easier for the staff up there, because.
I understand that wholeheartedly, but I work 6 to 6, so when we get in here, it's not a hospital.
Okay. Well, I know she also was going to allow people, if they sent a copy of the registration or something in the mail, she could then mail it to you, or if you emailed her your credentials, she would send it. So if you wanna call Amy, you're at the town clerk's office during regular business, just say, "How do I handle this?" That way you're all set, come January 1st, when we have the new stickers.
I just don't wanna, number one, send my license to the mail.
Yeah, no, no, no. It wouldn't be that.
Number two, it's not my registration is sent to the mail.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my issue.
Right, right.
You know, I just don't.
She's great, she's handled all those, and we've talked about all the different exceptions and come up with a nice process, so.
All right.
Do you have any more detail on the motion you just made on what properties you're talking about? It's a pretty loose-ended motion, it just says two properties, is it just two pieces of property, no buildings?
Yes, it was the two vacant pieces of property, and you're right, I meant to look that up, and without the lights in my office, I didn't have a chest.
I have it, but not with me.
There's two, there's two vacant lots over there?
The two vacant lots that are adjacent to the backside is on, kind of in the, on the wetland edge there.
One of them's next to your property.
Across from your property.
There's that one, where's the second one?
Small, small portion before you turn into your road on this side of the pond.
There's two kind of adjacent.
Before you turn into the side, that one right there?
Very slim.
So just the two properties, not the building?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because those are, those are the cleanest ones, the one with the building, it's just so complicated with the lease situation then.
It should probably be clarified in the motion, it's a little more detailed.
I can get those names for you, Carol, if I can.
Okay.
Between now and the next meeting.
That's a good point, Tim, I mean, it would definitely be in the town, the legal notice.
It's in that deck I wrote for you.
Maybe our assessor notes.
We know, it's in, it's in the deck.
It's in the deck, exactly, but she just walked out, so. We're still in Audience of Citizens, anyone on the line?
I'm trying to find my folder here.
All right, so Tim, that is a good idea, where was our motion?
Number nine.
Number nine.
Oh, no.
Ten.
I'm ten, sorry.
Let's open it up slowly.
Thank you for finding it so quickly. Well, Catherine's looking that up.
Yeah, it is a lot, teeny tiny type, sixty-eight and sixty, I believe it's eight dash one.
Sixty-eight, sixty-eight dash one?
This one, this one, yep. Tim, if you want to look at this.
Sixty-eight and sixty-eight dash one, okay. Joy, can we amend our?
Sixty-eight and sixty-eight dash one, right?
Sixty-eight and sixty-eight dash one.
Correct, correct, yes.
I think there's actually a B.
Is it a B?
It's a B.
Ah, see, let me get this.
Instead of dash one, it's dash B?
Yeah, it's six B dash one, and six, six B and six B dash one.
Six B, six D.
I had my eye on it, obviously, I was.
Yeah, all right.
I'll get them glasses checked.
I know, Catherine can't see.
This is good as a guess, folks.
All right, anyone else, Audience of Citizens? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, well, adjourn the meeting at seven oh two PM, thank you.
Here you, here you, welcome to the Deep River Board of Finance, regular October 2024 meeting. Again, it's my hope that in a hundred years from now, people will look at this video and will know what we did, we are making history, everyone. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of September 24th. I believe that is right, does anyone wish to make a motion, have any comments on the minutes?
No comments, but a motion to approve it.
Done with the deal, cool. I have the first, does anyone wish to give me a second? Second, although it's in favor, please say aye. Thank you, I have no comments other than the following. First off, we should compliment, we should thank Jackie for stepping up to, stepping up. What do we step up to, the plate, that's a well-overused phrase, stepping up is not. A conversation, Jackie has used the phrase that we move money from unassigned contingency, I believe it is really unassigned surplus, but there is no difference between contingency and surplus, so I think we're fine. And actually, Jackie asked me to look at them before, so I have no right to say anything now. I had an opportunity, excellent, thank you. The next item on our agenda would be comments from the, of the public, anyone have anything they wish to say? Citizens, while we are all citizens, let us move on, Tommy, I believe this is your spotlight is on you.
Thanks, everyone have the deposit report, I hope, thank you for sending that out to Selectmen and the Board of Finance. I'd like to start, actually, there was one mistake from last, last month and on the report, and that had to do with the capital improvements borrow account. It was two hundred nineteen thousand, seven forty-eight, sixty-seven cents short. So that actual balance on that account from, from last month should have been seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight sixty-eight, thirty-three. In fact, when that came up, I spoke to Anne Marie, and we're looking, we're looking around what, what dispersment, dispersment was made from that, that account, we couldn't find anything. So went back to Liberty Bank and the, the amount was incorrect, so I had to make that correction. So what it does, it just, again, the capital improvements borrow will go up two hundred nineteen thousand, seven forty-eight, sixty-seven, so that balance of last, last month should have been seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight sixty-eight, thirty-three, and that would change our general fund totals as well, and the bottom line for our total deposits. But if you look at this new report, deposit report that I gave out, on the bottom, on nine twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, that is the correct number of eleven, a million, four forty-three, six thirty-four, seventy-eight. So sorry for that, sorry for that confusion. So having said that, our general fund account balance is, this, this month, we're a million, two seventeen, seven eighty-nine, oh two, less than where we, where we were last, last month, so that's actually taking what our, the, the general fund balance is, and then we, we subtract the, the capital improvements borrow account, and to come up with what the true, true balances of the general fund accounts. So on the capital improvements borrow, and originally that was, we borrowed money from Dine Bank for a million, four twenty-five. Money's borrowed from the loan proceeds, it's like a holding account until the dispersments are made, and I, you know, I brought up this pretty much all the time. So we really had no dispersments made from last, from nine twenty-three to ten twenty-one. There was a difference of eighteen hundred and twenty dollars and forty-four cents, and what that is, that's the interest that we've earned on the account. We do earn three percent interest with Liberty Bank, that's the highest rate allowed because of this account, which is like a holding account on monies that, dispersment monies that we've put into that account from a, from a, from a loan. So to date, we still have six hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-three cents left to be dispersed on that, on that particular account. As I said last month, Guilford Savings Bank had lowered their interest, interest rates, deposit rates from four, from five percent to four, four thirty, I'm sorry, to four fifty. And right after our meeting last month, the next day, Liberty Bank actually did the same thing, they lowered their rates by to four and a half percent as well. And that's really because, you know, again, the Federal Reserve dropping their rates by, by a half a percent, that was kind of expected. Our ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan account, there's been, there was a difference from last month to this month of nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents in the accounts, so right now, that balance is five thirty-three, five ninety-three, ninety-two cents. Most of that money is actually, we're waiting for it to clear, I guess, waiting for whoever we gave the monies to, to do their thing, and so eventually that will be coming down quite rapidly, I presume. Wire transfers, I did two wire transfers on the last, last month, totaling a million, five hundred thousand. One was made on nine twenty-three for a million dollars, ten seven, another one for five hundred thousand, and those monies were from the Liberty Bank money market account, went into our Citizens Bank general fund account. Our education equalization grant monies, these ECS monies, will be receiving our first of three installments on October 31st, for a quarter of what our total that we received, which is a million, six seventy-six, one oh five, so we'll be getting a quarter of that, or four hundred nineteen thousand, twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. So that'll be coming at the end of this month, October 31st. The second, and that's, again, that's a quarter of the amount that we received. The second installment will be received on January 31st for the same amount, and then our final installment will be due, will be received on April 30th, two thousand twenty-five, for eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. That's actually a million, six, six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars more than we received last year from that. Our total balances, if we take our, our bottom line, our total balance figure, we take away the capital improvements borrow account, we take away the ARPA funds for ten twenty-one, twenty-four, the, the real figure is eight million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, one fifty-eight, seventy-six. It's a million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars less than last, last month. Which pretty much coincides with our general fund account balance amount, too. Just going over the upcoming bond, bond issues, we did make payments on two of our bond issues. Number one is a sewer construction bond, which actually, we do every single month, it's a monthly principal and interest payment of sixteen thousand, nine fourteen, seventy-six. That'll be due on October 31st. Originally, that, that was for three million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars back in two thousand six. And after we make that October 31st payment, we'll be down to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirteen cents. There'll be eighteen payments left on, on that bond issue, and that's the, the first one of our six that'll actually, actually mature first. The second one, a capital purchase from Dine Bank, that was the original amount of five hundred thousand. That closed on ten thirty-one, twenty-three, but we have a payment due on, that was due on ten fifteen. It's forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, principal of thirty-three thousand, three thirty-three, and interest of fourteen thousand, three seventy-five, so that balance, we made our first payment, principal paydown on that, so it went from five hundred thousand to four hundred and sixty-six thousand, six sixty-six, sixty-seven cents. That is for fifteen years, so we have fourteen, fourteen years to go on that, on that particular bond issue. And then the next one that will be due will be the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project, that's due on December 17th, that'll be a principal and interest payment of a hundred and eighteen thousand, three seventy-nine. That was originally for two, two million, nine hundred and ten thousand, was for forty years. And when we make that payment, right now, I'm sorry, right now the balance due on that is two million, five ninety-one, eight seventy-one. So that one still has, it was for forty years, it still has thirty-two years to go, but would be, that's our next, that's the actual next payment we'll be making on, on our, on our bond issue. And that's, that's all we have.
The sewer bond issues, which we borrowed from USDA, when do we pay them, monthly, semi-annually?
The, which one, the first one?
Well, actually, I was.
The sewer construction?
Last one, yeah.
Construction, construction, the construction bond, the Clean Water Fund project? Yeah, that's.
No, that's an old one, isn't it? The W, the ones with the USDA? That would have been your last one.
Let's see.
For some reason, I thought you paid it monthly, but it sounded like the way you called it out.
Let's see if I can. The Kirtland, Kirtland River Street Sewer Project?
Yes, yes, yes.
That one, okay, that one, we pay, just, we pay a hundred and eighteen thousand, three seventy-nine, principal and interest per year.
Because here it's an annual payment?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's an annual, so we still have.
You've got a chart with all of that, you walk on the chart with the.
Oh, sure is, I just didn't look at, I, if we, if there is a yes vote on the, the firehouse, I'd assume we would lean towards an USDA bond, I'm just curious how often we made this, okay?
Yeah, but I'm just trying to think what interest rate that was.
Tommy, remind me of your nomenclature, the business money market, that is, the Guilford Savings, both for the town and the WPCA. What is, well, I understand a sweep account, when you identify it separately, municipal sweep money market, that is, with Liberty, what, how does that work? At the end, I, my definition of sweep is they end every day.
Yeah, actually, we don't really sweep, that's just the name of the account, but, you know, we just make transfers from that account to, to the general fund when we, when we do the monies.
Oh, okay, I assume they were sweeping every night.
Yeah, no, we'll sweep.
Whatever that means.
Have we received the hundred thousand from WPCA yet?
No, we haven't, no.
It's an annual payment. Do we know when we'll be getting that?
Yeah, right.
I'm, Anne Marie is going to correct me, no, we do not. Now, Anne Marie will step forward, so she just hasn't billed them yet, how about we accept that as the right answer?
Is that money still coming to us, or weren't they debating whether or not they were going to give it or take it back?
Let's assume that Anne Marie hasn't billed them yet, I cannot guarantee to you there will not be further discussions. So let's, let's just assume that it's a billing issue, let's blame it, we'll blame it on the accountants and it's a billing issue, all right, like everyone else has done, so, okay, excellent. And Tommy, before we leave you, in anticipation, looking at the financials, you have generated, Anne Marie's gonna correct me on this one, ninety-five thousand dollars in interest, so far through.
Well, I saw it myself, and I said, whoa.
I actually called Anne Marie, that can't be right.
No, I, yeah, well, I wish it was, I'm sure it isn't true.
I don't know, Anne Marie said, Anne Marie actually said she hasn't booked all the rates in it, so.
Because actually, the rate's been coming down, too, so that's incredible. I did speak to Anne Marie, we're supposed to have a meeting with Ivory Wealth Management, I guess it's, it's gonna be Thursday, but it's gonna be rescheduled.
I think so.
Yeah, and having said that, Essex Financial knows that there has been a change, because they called me.
Tom, is there a place I can get a total figure of what those six bonds cost us each month? All of the bonds we pay on, do we, is there a total figure, like?
I could, I could try to put something together for that, I'll just.
Could you give me an about figure?
For each, each month?
No, totally, yes, per month.
Of all the six payments that we make, how much we pay? Yeah.
Doesn't the annual report have that detail? I don't think it has it on a period basis.
Our budget has the annual.
Has the annual numbers, the annual report has buy, issue, and annual numbers, doesn't it?
Because some of them are forty years, some of them are fifteen years, some are thirty-five years. I would just like to know what we're averaging a month paying off all of these bonds.
Right, but we're not, we're not paying them every month, right? Well, most of them are semi-annual or annual payments, only one of them is paid every month.
Some we have to pay like interest every six months, and then the other six months we pay principal and interest. Right, some, there were a couple that are, well, one is that monthly.
Yes.
But most of them are actually, we pay like a large principal paydown for the year.
So we have this chart updated that everyone's had, Tom prepared this, we worked on it together. So we've got the bonds, and we've got a monthly payment, it shows, we can recirculate this, Tom, I can give it to you and you can send it out. The Clean Water one has a monthly payment, Kirtland is played, paid annually, Kirtland Expansion, Expansion is paid annually, annually, capital improvements is annually, interest paid semi-annually. So there's, there's a, they vary.
So each year we.
Are making six bond payments?
Yes.
And, okay, so maybe that's a figure.
Payments towards six bonds.
And the one that is actually coming due in eighteen months, once that's, that's paid off, because that was originally, that was our largest one, it was originally three million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, so when that's paid off, it's gonna free up pretty much a quarter of a million dollars per year for that. We pay, you know, we pay nineteen, why did I say nineteen thousand, I'm sorry, sixteen thousand, nine fourteen, seventy-six, so, you know, it'll, it'll.
We did this chart back in May, and we sent it to Anne Marie, Tom and Bud, so Bud, let me resend it to you and maybe you send it to the board.
Sure, send it straight to the board if you'd like.
I don't have a wall, I need Anne Marie's file, that's the whole thing.
You can reply to the emails where I send reports, guys, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Tom, and thank you for all of your, your earnings. It is Selectmen, it's time to Selectmen, Carol, what do you have to say and share?
Well, I just wanted to go over a few things, like our Oak Ridge Drive property, since last we met. last we met, that is now up twenty-one thousand, that job. Something with RFP, and there was additional scope of work, that sort of thing. The job is almost complete, so that's good. Then basement work, we, here for the town hall, is kind of unknown. We're gonna, our first step, Dick said would be electrical, would be first, get the better lights down there, and then we'll go out for, figure out the scope of work for dehumidifiers, air conditioners, that sort of thing. OSHA would like us to have the exit signs well-marked, and they are not right now. So doing the electrical first will also help us abate that issue that we had with, but we don't have a price on the electrical yet.
Does the twenty-one thousand have to go to the town for approval?
I guess eventually, but right now, it was, we're eating it in one of the accounts, right, the highway. But we wanted to hold off because the job is not complete, so we don't have the exact figure. We just know that was the...
What, what job are we talking about? Basement or both just?
Oak Ridge job.
Oak Ridge, oh, started, I thought it started, moved on to the basement.
Oh, I just mentioned Oak Ridge, we were up twenty-one since last, this group got together, because we found there was an error with the scope of work, that sort of thing. So that job ended up being, so instead of forty-two, it ended up being sixty-four.
And the town, at the town meeting, we approved forty-two.
Right.
So we had a town meeting, and I don't know, you should finish up your time. I'm leaning that the dollars we asked the town to approve may have been pretty mature.
Um, but...
Go for it.
We allocated seventy for drainage issues.
To Oak Ridge?
Well, I called it drainage issues, so...
To which kind of issues?
Drainage.
Drainage, yeah, Oak Ridge, okay.
Well, that also included the...
The town gave us money to take money, to return the money...
To set the...
To the road group, come on.
Did that include all the piping?
And you've made a capital until you will, and you, you can take over this conversation anytime, you are going to return expense money to that budget line of...
So we have coded a few expenses to the highway department as established. Notably, the most notable expense at this point, for the piping. That is around twenty thousand dollars. That expense will be reclassed over into our capital fund, therefore freeing up their budget.
Excellent, good. And what will you do with this extra cost to Oak Ridge? Expense it until we go to another town meeting?
It's an option. There are others. Because this is inherently a capital project, I would suggest that this board could take a look at the current state of the capital fund at the next Board of Finance meeting. There are some things to consider, such as, as we just noted in the general fund, Tom is earning interest at a pretty significant rate. And because we have bank accounts that, where we hold our capital funds separate, that is also earning interest, and that money has not necessarily been allocated towards anything.
Well, then, I have two questions. So when Tom earns interest on our capital account, you just book it as interest in that account, you don't allocate it back over projects?
It stays in the capital fund. Interest earns in the capital fund.
But you don't allocate it back over each of those projects? You just keep it as...
So the ninety-five thousand dollars that you'll see on the revenue report here is only relative to...
Only now, that's under the town stuff, right?
General fund.
Wow, so Tom even gets more at once?
He does.
Exactly.
He's a busy guy.
Okay, there's some time, you're doing great. Excellent. So what is the Oak Ridge, start over, what's the Oak Ridge Drive?
Right now, right now, it's twenty-one. But the job is not complete, so.
We haven't received the majority of the bills around this, so...
Okay, but I was more concerned about, there's additional funds needed for that project. Twenty-one is beyond what this board can deal with. So we have to go back, no. We could go back to the town and ask for additional funds, or we could pull, one of your options, was continue to pull it out of the town approval.
Which, given that we do now have seventy-eight thousand dollars we can allocate towards this project, I would recommend we do tap into the highway department's budget temporarily until this project is complete and we have a final figure.
That'd be my thought. Now, the other one where I lean, said, I'm leaning towards we may have been a tad premature, some of the numbers we were assuming we were going to spend, and we've asked the town to approve, are no longer active. Some are high, some are low?
I believe so.
So with that catchy phrase, we'll have to clean that up sometime in the future.
Yes.
Reallocate or something. Okay, it'll be, okay, sorry, Carol, keep on going.
No, no, so we are planning a town meeting at some point, because we have to do our reappointment of members to boards. We're going to move forward with selling the incubator properties, those two vacant lots, to see if the town wants us to actually put them on the market. So at that, if we can do that at the end of November, perhaps Oak Ridge Drive, we will have a better number, that if we want to bring that to a town meeting. So perhaps at your next Board of Finance meeting, we'll have a better figure to present.
Again, some of the numbers, like your poles, we assumed four bolts and poles at seven thousand dollars. Those costs aren't coming in, that's too low, high, isn't it?
No, actually, and we got, we got reimbursed seven thousand dollars from an insurance company, the check...
Therefore, they're even higher. The town approved, we would set up a capital fund for twenty-eight thousand dollars, so it's sitting in capital, and it should, how about that for a conclusion? Shouldn't be there.
But it can be reallocated.
Can be reallocated. So if, this goes to mind, somewhere in the future, we'll have to tidy up some of these mullings, okay?
But that's always the case with capital.
It is, isn't it?
I do agree.
All right. Certainly, you are absolutely right. The future always needs to be tidied. I have a problem, Carol, go back to the basement.
Okay, so unknown scope of work for now. Dick Leighton said he would, he's going to get the electrical done first, so I don't know what that's going to cost. But that'll do two things. It'll give us a well-lit area, so that we can actually get contractors in if we need to do RFP for dehumidifiers or new AC. But also, once we get the electrical done, we can put the exit signs in where they need to be, and that'll be one of our OSHA abatement projects that we need to conclude.
All right, Anne Marie, go jump in.
Okay. Go ahead, Anne Marie.
If you look at, if you look at currently unspent funds in town buildings, there is money. You've spent all of your authorized dollars. The thirty-eight is in there, and OSHA is in the buildings. Is that where it all is? There's nothing, I think you got the random dollars on it.
We do, we have some minor OSHA, like some of the signs, I think, maybe hit against that town building repairs line, if not office supplies, honestly.
So to spend any of the money you just listed, we need to, Anne Marie, is that correct? We authorize, the town authorized some dollars to reimburse that line of, you take over, are they, are they, there's no money in these town buildings. Do we have to go back to a town meeting to clean that up? Tidy, is my word for the evening. Tidy that up, or incrementally ask for more. We can't spend any money. We shouldn't spend any money until we've tidied this up.
So I was reviewing the minutes from the town meeting, and I may or may not have confused myself or made an error in looking at the way we moved that hundred fifty thousand dollars. We listed in the first motion the items that we wanted covered, and one of those things was the initial work on cleaning the basement, the thirty-eight, which is eating up the majority of that town building repairs line.
Correct.
But when I look at the titles that I put together for capital projects in the second item in the minutes, nothing in that, to me screams molder mediation, unless, and I wanted to follow up on this today, but I did not have the chance. Did OSHA end up requesting evidence of our cleanup down in the basement? Because I thought I recalled something about that.
They have not. She has not with me, no.
Then...
The only thing she brought up was the exit signs in the basement. If any employees were going to go down there, but I told her, we're kind of, shut it off right now, we don't have, there's no use down there except to go down to the vault, but it's not a...
So we have no conclusion? You have the right to think about these things, but we have no money to spend all those things that you just listed out, at the moment. Unless this board says spend, and we'll worry about it later.
Hope we've moved the thirty-eight back in.
Well, that's the question, Anne Marie. That's what I'm going on.
That's, that's the problem, is while the thirty-eight is referenced in item one, it's not really given a home in item two. Because the three capital projects that were created were drainage issues, which I don't know if maybe we wanted to cover that. OSHA abatement, and then what's the other one? Light poles.
So that brings town meeting, we have to clarify that.
Well, you need to get this board the information before we have a town meeting.
Well, right, I just, I already said that next time we meet, we'll talk about what's on the town meeting agenda, but I was kind of more asking Anne Marie. Absolutely.
Is that too much time now? I'm really resistant bringing in this board for special meeting to deal with that, but do we have, is this time getting too tight on what we do on the basement?
What was your question?
Do we bring this board back again, so you tell us what those costs are, and what we need to do?
Oh, well, I don't have that information yet from Dick, so I don't know. I think we're just doing it in its stages, so the electrical is going to be first. I mean, we have to...
Great, I have no problem with the logic of that statement. Does that mean every stage, you got to go to a town meeting?
Well, no, I was just saying, I don't have the figure for you, and I don't think we, because we have heat, we're not in the diner situation like that. We can take the time in the basement.
Okay.
That was all.
All right. On with the Board of Finance, I understand, is that, okay, sounds good. Good, continue.
Okay, let's see, OSHA abatement's moving forward, ARPA funds moving forward, as Tom said, we still have a lot there, but everyone that got that last allotment, they're all scurrying, having their meetings, you know, lining up their RFPs, that sort of thing, so we're, we're watching that, so we don't have to give any money back to the state.
Are they supposed to be spent by the end of the year, is that...
Contract signed by the end of the year, and then the projects can kind of go out. We had some new hires that we have, Anne Marie has a new finance director assistant, assistant to the finance director, I guess I should say. She started yesterday, and, and her name is Tara.
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 Does she have a last name?
House.
Tara, as in the king?
The Bill of Canada, in Ireland, okay.
I mentioned it in the board of select committee, but I didn't have her last name either, so it's House. Okay. The Park and Rec has not yet hired anyone. They have four applicants that, they haven't set up their committee yet, so we're, I'm trying to get on them to do that. And then the assessor's assistant, that position has been advertised, and interviews for full-time, and an offer made to someone.
Is now the time for you to explain why, since we assumed that was a part-time, why you authorized to do it full-time?
Well, I know we talked about it way back in the budget, but it got put in the budget as full-time, once the march down, the budget got passed, I didn't think it was...
I got to put an asterisk beside that. We put it in the budget as full-time at your request, because we want to be honoring this person, who is in that position, we didn't know when they were going to leave. So I got to push back that it's in the budget as full-time.
Okay, well, this is a union position, and I don't, the union is not interested in taking it out of the union and making a...
And I got to push back. I asked you to talk to our union attorney to find out whether there's any way we can pull that out. What you're basically saying is that position will be with us as a full-time position into eternity. There's got, of course, what is it, let's say, I spent, full-time benefits, twenty, pension, twenty-five, a part-time position, you're talking about thirty thousand, at least thirty thousand dollars. That is the taxes of at least three or four families in this town. We have an obligation to those people to manage that money fairly. I'm just not sure that's the right spot to put our limited dollars.
Okay, well, I would push back and say it's always been a full-time position.
No, it is not. It's been part-time for two years.
No, it has not.
Millie was part-time, we're fifteen hours for fifteen.
And it didn't work out for the office.
Why not?
And I've talked to the assessor.
Why is this the first time we're hearing about that? It's been part-time for two years. Why are we now hearing about it?
May I speak?
Whoever wants to speak can speak.
All right, first off, you're correct, Bud, that she's been working twenty-one hours, being paid for thirty, which was in agreement with Angus, because that was a benefit to the town to offset what she would be retiring with.
Correct.
Secondly, from the beginning, when Angus made that decision with Millie, I expressed my concerns from the office at that time, and I was assured it was going to be a small temporary time until a new hire was created, and then I will admit time got away, and furthermore, when my husband became ill, I did take advantage of the fact of keeping Millie here to help cover the office. In addition to that, we made many changes. First, I'm not quite sure if, maybe you don't have a great understanding of what occurs in the assessor's office. So I do appreciate Carol telling me yesterday that this would be coming up today, so I apologize, I only have ten handouts, and it's a little quickly put together, but I'd like to just express the needs of our office and what exactly happens there. In addition to this, I don't, anyone that might have spent two minutes with me, you just said three times that you've had conversations on this. Not once, Bud, have you ever had a conversation with me.
That's your first election, so what are you doing?
So the first election did have a conversation with me, and...
Was it part of the budget?
It was part of the budget.
Coming into the budget of the budget?
When we, yes, it was. When I went to board and finding...
She agreed to a part-time position as part of the budget.
That was not information that was ever brought to me.
I can't help that.
Well, I think you can, Bud, because we've talked about this...
First election brings to the budget, that information.
Well...
I participated with Angus in making decisions, this is a part-time position.
And we can call Angus in as well. Angus...
We can indeed, and he tells me it is a part-time position.
And I finished my, he did not ever say that.
Did Gabe tell me that when we worked on the part-time position?
Well, I would like to clarify that in my conversations with Angus, he asked when we would be starting this position back to full-time, because of the fact of the benefit that is taken away from the office. So the benefits of, we tried to close the office on Mondays to help catch up on the work. We have tried to do many other things. Now, within the twenty-one hours, someone with twenty-one years of experience wasn't able to get the job done. So in addition to that twenty-one hours and her twenty-one years' experience, there, things began to fall through the crack, and there's errors, I'm now at a hundred percent QC of, of keeping the office clean and keeping things up to date as much as I can, but at the expense of me doing my job, which is I should be in the field, making you money, getting your grant list up, when I'm finally in the office, taking care of the public, and handling the other aspects of the job that need to be done, which only a few of them are outlined in my handout, I'm sure I'm missing quite a bit, the, the work that you need is not getting done. And so I'm here to express to you that, A, the, the job has been offered, and our start date is November seventh, and B, this was never expressed to me that this is now a part-time job. It's in the budget for, and Anne Marie, please correct me, but wouldn't I have nullified the budgetary process that it's not coming through on my ledgers?
Carol, go.
Well, I respectfully disagree, Carol, and I never had that conversation, so I'll let you two discuss that at your point, but I am telling you...
Why was this position offered as a full-time, and this board said to you, discuss it at this meeting? Why was it offered as a full-time job before you brought it to this board?
It was a...
So I was in this board, make, you, I asked you on Friday, discuss with the board, how could you extend an offer before you discussed it with this board?
Because it was in the budget as full-time.
We've discussed that.
We have, so that's what I was...
You agreed that it was a part-time position, we tried to be respectful of Robin's family situation and the income.
I don't know if I ever agreed that it was a part-time position.
You did not disagree with it, so I'm going to take that as an agreement.
No, I don't do that.
Why?
It's always been a full-time position. I've worked at this town for twelve years.
Not for the two years Millie was there.
She was getting paid for full-time, and Robin was always behind...
The work was part-time.
She was always behind on the work, and so... She was always behind on the work, and so I knew that, Angus knew that.
Why wasn't that made known to us?
I'm sure I brought it up at a meeting months ago, Bud. I've never been in favor of making that part-time.
If an extension, anyone in the Board of Finance have anything to say? I suggest the conversation is over.
Could I just ask some question, just clarification? Was this a part-time position turned into a full-time position?
No, it's always been full-time.
I've been here for over 31 years, and prior to me, the previous woman that I worked with had probably been here for 30 years. So I'm going to easily guess 60-plus years that's been a full-time position.
So why was the, why was she using crude sick time and is that legal to do that?
I, in my heart, I don't believe so. It was something Angus agreed to, knowing the, my concerns about it, and he thought, I guess I'm just going to guess, he thought he was just doing a right thing to help the town not have to pay out a huge amount of sick time that this woman in 21 years had accumulated. So in my heart, I think he thought it was the best thing for the town as long as we could maintain the office. And even he came to me before he was finished with his term to say, how much longer is this going on? And I asked him, when, what do you and Millie have in writing on this? And so he then left it to Carol, then for us to make the decision, and then again, Millie was ready to finish, and my husband did get sick. So here we are, and I will take the hit, seven months, but I swear to you, Bud, those conversations have never happened, and you're here every day. I understand your point that the selectman has to say it to me, but I'm a bit upset prior to that because Jackie had made a comment about, oh, I had heard this in, I believe, one of the Board of Assessment appeal meetings, just a simple comment, we had a slight conversation. So...
What did I say?
Excuse me?
What did I say?
We just, I fought within our conversations in there, you asked me what was happening with Millie and is it going to be a part-time position? And again, it was during hearings, we were in that between people, but this, the board can't talk to me, I don't, I'm just very surprised that that will be your take on it.
Selecting responsibility is to bring into the Board of Finance what were different needs. So I'm going to continue to lean, that should have been the voice of the first selectman, but I suggest the conversation is over, we've extended an offer. Anyone wish to go super into that?
How are you leaving it, Bud?
I have no, it is a, an offer has been made.
But if it's a 21-hour job, it's being locked...
No, 30 hours, 30 hours per week.
Didn't you say she worked 21 hours?
My previous, when Millie was working off her sick time, Angus allowed her to work 21 hours, get paid for 30, she used nine hours of sick time in every payroll. So she continued to, whether that's legal or not, from now on, I don't know.
Do we ever get audited on that stuff? Anne Marie and Carol, do we ever get audited on that kind of thing? Is that legal to do that?
The auditors do do a payroll audit. I, they sample. They're not looking at every week's time card, so even if they were to grab Robin's previous assistant, they wouldn't necessarily assume that there was something going on of that nature. As far as the legality around it, I would have to do research.
And it had occurred with another employee of our town also, so I think that's where Millie and Angus got the idea, but I'm just guessing on that, but she is not the first employee to receive that allowance.
The practice itself is common. The amount of time that it went on is not.
Practice is common where?
It's a pretty common thing to hear people who know that they're leaving to start taking extra time off and start taking...
The problem with taking sick time...
Right, but if she's working part-time hours and that extra's making her full-time, that's a little bit different than I'm burning my time on the way out the door.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree, I agree. It was a difference.
Is there an MOU in effect from Angus and the union about it part-time or full-time? Is there any documentation other than this happened over a cup of coffee sometime?
I don't, I asked Angus for a document and what exactly was agreed to, and I don't believe there was one.
My opinion, Bud, my union experience, we agree the same, if it's classified as a full-time position, it's going to have to be negotiated differently. That's the way the union's going to take it. I do, I think, I think it's unethical that it happened, and I think it's disgusting that the residents have been paying for that, but if it's classified as a full-time position, my opinion, the only way is to go to the Labor Board and hash it up there.
The only extra point that I would add is that there seems to be a lack of clearness and communication between our first selectman and our head of finance, or chair of the Board of Finance, or what comes out here.
And the Board of Finance.
And maybe there's, we need to do something about that. I'm concerned about both things, but that is a problem. I don't know if it requires certain checks or quarterly reviews of key items or what, but that was a slip.
All right, the conversation is ended as far as I'm concerned. Anyone wish to continue with it?
Well, I would like to say, since I didn't, I didn't ever approve to or agree to the full-time, I didn't realize I needed to come back to the board after it was in the budget. So to me, it was kind of something that was accepted and went through. I didn't realize the board was so against this one thing. I mean, those budget workshops, we went over so many line items, cutting the newsletter and all this kind of stuff, so kind of whatever was left standing, I thought was the document we were going off of.
And to that, and I'd like to suggest that on our next budget workshops, we take better minutes, not just list things out, because I think there's so much talked about and ideas thrown out, and then the minutes don't reflect anything. And that's the only thing we have to say what we talked about, so I think we should do that in the future.
Have we set some sign of, kind of precedent with the union in this practice that went on and has now ended that is going to cause us any problems or that we need to formalize in any way?
As far as I can tell, nothing was ever written down, so I don't think anything was formalized.
All right, this conversation's over. Carol, do you have more to share as they select?
Um...
So I'm sorry, how, it's just going to go forward, right, for hire the person?
Seems like it's done now.
Uh, just that...
Just want clarity. Make sure we write it down.
Can we go back to the $150,000 that was approved at the town meeting? Because I just pulled up the minutes, and I think it may be different, what I wrote the minutes than what you were talking about, Anne Marie, because I have $70,000 for drainage issues.
Yes.
$18,000 for fencing and painting the kitchen, $20,000 for asbestos testing, and $28,000 for four light poles. So I have nothing for the basement, and I may have misunderstood, but...
So maybe the item one where that was snuck in was the confusion on my part, because so the second part of what was voted on in the town meeting aligns with that. I just combined the fencing and the asbestos testing into one OSHA abatement project.
Okay. But still, there's nothing in there for the basement project? Because I was thinking that, Carol, you had mentioned that it was coming out of that, I may have misunderstood that.
Hmm, that's where I thought it was coming out of.
But we, that was not...
38 for service clean, because we had already spent that...
We'd already spent that out of town budget. And that didn't get approved at the town meeting. So just when you start to plan for your next town meeting, I think we have to go through this very carefully to make sure.
The $70,000 was for what?
$70,000 times four for lamp posts.
Correct.
So it was $28,000.
And was one of the...
No, you said $70,000.
Oh, it was the archery.
That is going to follow the law and follow the person?
We didn't get a check on the lamp posts.
But wasn't there another one that you were going to try to do some, and that's the gate of work to see if the second one could get paid for?
Yep, so we're still not on that one. We don't know.
Now, you paid your OSHA fines, minutes, so you had to pay some in October. All were paid, fines are paid.
Fines are all paid, you guys voted to take them out of each line item.
That's what we agreed to. And remediation would be taken out of the capital account, one capital account. Which, how much money did we put into that in the annual, at the town meeting?
50.
50?
OSHA abatement's were 52.
Of which some of it is contingency, correct? Just in case?
Yes, exactly.
All right. At the moment, is that a good number? We don't know yet.
I think it's an excellent place to start, yes.
Excellent place, starts a good place. All right, sounds good. All righty. Anne Marie, it is now your turn. Will you update the staffing we've handled, updating on the new accounting system, which I know you've been spending a ton of time, Jill?
Yes.
Will you start it off there?
An ordinance amount of time. Um, yes, about anywhere from 50 to 80% of my week at this point is spent on the new accounting system. We have been at it at that kind of aggressive pace for about a month, overall, about two months. We officially have a newly built chart of accounts. We've started loading some historical figures in there, so I've been able to run reports and tie things back to our old system. And now we are getting started on the accounts payable module, which gets pretty detailed in making sure, you know, we have all of our vendor information accurate. Being able to print checks from the system always seems to be a headache. And exploring options for, you know, bumping up our security, our fraud prevention, things like being able to upload files to, directly to the bank so they know what checks are expected to be cashed, and they'll be able to verify that against a list. So if for some reason anyone tried to commit check fraud, they would be flagged immediately. We also have the opportunity to add electronic signatures to the checks, which could save a few people at this table from developing carpool tunnel, as well as being an extra just fraud prevention measure, keeping the checks all in one place and not having documents floating around the building. And yeah, it's going really well though, I have to say. Frankly, smoother than I thought it would. So everyone involved still anticipates that we will be able to go live on January 1st.
You will do the new budget, next year's budget, on the new system?
Yes, I will.
All right, okay. You will run the two in dual, you are going to be required to run the two in dual. What we're looking at now, budget, old system, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It will be a very different looking report.
Oh, really? Very different looking?
Yes, the same information overall, but it will be a little prettier.
So we will know we're looking at something different?
You absolutely will.
All right, thanks, Jill. All right, do you anyone have any questions on the new accounting system? When do we make our payment to have access to this? Which would budget 20 happen, okay?
Yes, that happens in, I believe, March.
All right, a good month. Uh, okay, cool. It is now time for you to, in addition to working on accounting, you have been working on purchasing.
Yes.
Would you take us through your purchasing proposal?
Certainly. So not to steal credit, I faced this off of a purchasing policy that Essex put into place recently, and I sort of grabbed the overall piece and then adapted it to better suit our needs. I've already gotten some feedback on this document that I think is wonderful. I'm going to remove the option for verbal quotes and only do written. Thank you, Duane, I appreciate it.
Who suggested that, I mean, $5,000, $10,000, who suggested take verbal out? Seemed to be quite a luxury, not a luxury, obvious, I think at that level.
I was the one that said a verbal...
Okay, well, I have no problem with that. I just thought it was a small amount that you were doing, okay?
The reason being, because the $21,000 extra for a fridge drive was a verbal.
Ah.
I didn't hear that.
Which is interesting. It was 21 back when it was five.
So, that's why I would like everything in writing, so then there's no second guess or question.
But Anne Marie, we should let Anne Marie, would you address that? You can't break them up, but under some conditions, they just come at us in pieces, don't they? Keep, I'm sorry, keep on going.
Well, change orders are a bit of a different animal, but, because that is what that ended up being.
Cool, okay.
So on...
You gotta drop that.
Move on, sorry.
So on page one is purchasing...
You worry about yourself, Catherine, I'll worry about myself, well, thank you.
I will, but just to clarify for the record, what's being referenced to was there was a miscommunication, a, an amendment was not communicated to one of the vendors. That is why that bid was lower. That was not a verbal, any problem here. There was something that was written that did not get sent via electronic email.
No, but regardless, I do think it is better to have a quote written as opposed to...
Absolutely, I think that's, it's good. So this, you're going to change this, will it all be written?
Yes. So to speak to the purchasing threshold amounts on that first page, I need to clarify, we cannot put this into place without changing the town ordinance. So the way the town ordinance is currently written, it states that for any purchase over $5,000, we are expected to receive bids and RFPs, and they should be communicated in the newspaper. This is beyond administratively burdensome and quite frankly, not regularly practiced here. I believe that to change the thresholds, depending, you can see this table is split into two different pieces, one for non-infrastrucure, of course, the majority of our purchases, and then the threshold changes a bit for infrastructure because it is just a much more costly endeavor.
What is the age of the prior, the existing ordinance, and advertising newspapers? Actually, it's quaint to advertise anything in newspapers.
It is certainly old.
Yeah.
But there are pieces of state statute that still require things to be advertised in newspapers, so...
All right.
But yeah, so like I said, until that ordinance can be updated, this cannot truly be put into place. But I do think at least these thresholds are much more enforceable and reasonable to expect our departments to adhere to. And I still think like this will keep the financial interests of the town in mind. Those are kind of the bigger pieces to this...
Down, way down to the bottom end, it's a footnote, you have your last word is RFP, request for proposal. Would you differentiate between what you're asking, Bud, and an RFP?
Yes, so the difference, we'll do a little vocab lesson. So when bids are requested, the assumption when you're asking for a bid is that you have a very specific scope of work in mind. You are going to a contractor and you are saying, this is exactly what I need done, give me a price. If you are making a request for proposal, you are kind of giving a loose idea of maybe a problem you need solved or a general service you need. It is the vendor who is coming up with what they're going to provide you with.
RFP, we have to participate, so here's what we want, where these...
We kind of outline a rough scope.
We chat, and they will put what has to be done into writing.
Right, so that, like, I would, like, a written quote, I expect like a one sheet, like, here's a list of what you're going to get, and here's how much it costs. And RFP, when properly done, is a monthly document.
That is correct, okay, excellent, Jill.
Your ordinance is from 1980.
Thank you, I was going to guess the 80s, okay.
I just looked it up.
$5,000 was a lot of money in the 80s. Okay, cool, keep on going.
And so there are some, you know, references to federal uniform guidance standards, conflicts of interest, and there are exceptions that I detailed out in here, one of them being, you know, public emergencies would be exempt, but it would have to be declared an emergency by the Board of Selectmen. Single source, if for some reason it's found that there may only be one supplier for whatever we need, there's no need to go out to bid on that. And just times where, you know, it's hard to get like any kind of comparable bid, but again, that would be determined by the Board of Selectmen. And the biggest probably administrative change on here would be working with department heads to start getting requisitions into place, so this would mean them basically asking for permission in advance of purchasing something as opposed to the invoice just making its way to town hall and us dealing with whatever ramifications it may bring along. That will allow Carol and I to get eyes on it to ensure, you know, whatever's being purchased is reasonable, and it will give my office time to look at the budget and ensure those funds are there in advance.
Would you stop for a moment, go back to responsibilities? It's rather generic, open and doer here. These policies are directly binding upon all, so if I am on, if someone is on a certain commission, they are just assumed to be responsible for doing this.
So essentially, what that protects us from is anyone going out, purchasing something, and then requesting that we pay for it. They would need to follow proper procedure in order to expect the town. This is the... Um, this is the kind way of writing it. In the past, I have written it to say, I will hold you personally liable if you do not follow the right procedure.
That has happened in the past, has it not?
I have done it.
Okay.
Not necessarily here, but I have done it.
I have seen it, heard stories of it, yes. So if you will put this out, everybody on every board and commission is responsible for this?
Responsible for ensuring whatever purchases they make are authorized by the proper channels.
So let's take a wild one. The ethics group have a present, they are presented with a question. They believe they need expertise.
Sure.
Um, at which they have talked about, we put money in the budget, but he could, made attorney, two thousand, three thousand dollars.
Sure.
Okay? Made it up. They will have to go through this process to hire someone to provide them with.
Just them out? They should fill out a form that I can provide to them, a requisition form, that would, you know, ask who are you going to contract? What are you contracting them for? Where do you expect this money to come from? They have a budget item, so that's reasonable. Um, and then the approval flow for that will begin to go to Carol so that she can see and, you know, know that this expense is coming. She'll have her chance to perhaps disagree or suggest they use a different attorney. And then it will come to my office to ensure the budget funds are truly there.
And you do talk about if it is a contractor who's currently providing the services? For instance, in Eric, I have seen the planning and zoning incur fairly substantial legal fees. And when I ask, people seem to be taken by surprise that they incurred those fees. They would have to come, or all legal, they would have to come to you, Carol, to spend those fees? Theory they should already, but they're not.
Well, so legal fees are, from a budget perspective, handled sexually. Um, but if the planning and zoning board members are reaching out to lawyers directly and expecting the town to put the bill, then yes, I would expect Carol and I to be aware.
That's a good point. In theory, we budget legal fees in current budget, so she should be approving legal fees. Okay. And the conflict of interest, you put it after, uh, a reference to the code of ethics.
I did.
And they spend a lot of time on these kind of things. So if a volunteer fireman is asked to do work for the town, is that a conflict of interest?
Yeah, putting on a spotlight.
Since many of them are volunteers, several of them have outside occupations.
This is true.
You don't have to answer that, but I think that, that's an issue with the ethics committee, the people have raised.
Probably have to go out to bid on the contracts.
If they are the responsible, lowest bidder.
Even though they are a volunteer for the town?
Well, how would what you're...
In principle, I mean, certainly...
But how would it benefit them personally?
They would get paid.
Well, yes, but like Ben being a volunteer firefighter and coming and fixing the toilet in town hall, like...
Well, maybe because you're a volunteer firefighter, do they know what, that the toilet has to be fixed and so they get the job?
Well, but Mike just said if we go out to bid, then it's a fair playing surface and then if they're lowest bidder...
Question, do we, how much do we go out to bid?
We're telling about the minimum, it's over five thousand, correct?
Over five thousand, yeah.
So if they're fixing a toilet, I'm hoping it's like a cost of work, five thousand.
Well, if you have an electrical contractor, you usually go out to bid for the contract in the whole year.
I think maybe something to look at with the perception of unfairness then is that maybe for various categories, you have multiple bidders, multiple resourcer, or vendors that you use on a rotating basis so that one entity doesn't get all the work, even for the small jobs. That would be a way of handling it that would make it look fair. It would be fair.
By the same token, if you've got, and I'll use an electrician for example, if you have an electrician that works for the town a lot, they know the town buildings, so there's gonna be savings in the fact that they know the building. Or a plumber, or whatever, is if you're using, hiring a different person every time.
But if you have ten electrical contractors and nine of them aren't getting a bid on a job, they're gonna complain about it.
That's correct.
And they do.
Everything should be bid. For twenty years, I did a snow removal at Valley Ridge on John Monroe. I followed myself and it was a bid contract every year.
Have we gotten away from that?
Yes.
Yes.
Certain areas definitely.
We do that with electrical contractors all the time, you bid for the year. Labor rate, stuff like that.
So will the board get to see, the Board of Finance get to see these, um, departments that do go out for bids? Is, does that suggest that they're, they need to go over their budget?
It doesn't necessarily suggest that, no. Um, I mean, it would depend on the item. Uh, so the whole thing in this case, in that requisition process, um, if I decided, well, I'm probably not the best example, but if, if someone in this building decided that they needed to go out and spend fifty thousand dollars on a new software, no one in this building has the budget to handle something like that. So that's the point of filling out the form in advance so that it does come to us and we can go to them and have a conversation and explain that that's not an option.
Right. That is the advance, so you will see it, if it goes over budget, to your point.
Well, I would suggest that it would help the Board of Finance to know how to set a budget if departments are going, and there's a necessity for that department to go over its budget for an occasional something or maybe a reoccurring something.
That's correct.
That means we're not budgeting well.
And kind of, certainly we are, been surprised, often, fire department being a fine example, sometimes there are just sudden things that have to be done.
So Carmela, to your point, what I would like to see happen eventually is there is an additional module we can add on to the accounting software, it's the purchasing module. It would make this process of requisitioning electronic, and in your reports that you receive at these meetings, there would be an additional column for encumbrances, which essentially says, I as a department head know I'm going to spend this money on this thing, I'm essentially under contract for it. And then you can see a true representation of, you know, this is how much money is truly left in this line. It also would say, I want to go out and spend this money, I have it earmarked for this, and if I'm over this line item, there's still maybe a little bit of time for us to go back and say, hold on a second, like, maybe there's another option to explore here. It just gives us a clearer, more actionable picture of the finances.
Encumbrances, excellent. We do, we have not had encumbrances. If someone has committed to spend time funding, we don't see it in our budget decisions. Excellent. I think you've made great progress. Uh, what, what is your recommendation to do from here on? We have to, do we have to approve this, selectmen have to approve it, town meeting has to? Certainly a town meeting has to put in the plan, is what you're trying to do.
Uh, well, I don't honestly think that it can be approved and put into place until the ordinance is updated, so maybe that's something we can add.
Oh, you have to...
So can we not approve it, um, pending the ordinance being approved at a town meeting? Does that seem that's where those get approved?
That is where those would be.
Yeah. And if we can do it and put it on the next town meeting agenda, coming up end of November, whenever we have it, that would be great.
A little conditional approval?
Is anyone working on this, uh, piece of ordinance update?
I have something written up.
That's an excellent, have town personnel seen this and given you feedback?
Um, not...
Do you expect feedback, do you expect negative response from some?
Uh, well, it does create additional administrative burden, uh, so I'm sure there will be some pushback. And I am not expecting to lay down this document and leave people floundering with what should I be doing next. Um, I think I, except for when I'm doing implementation stuff on the software, my door is always open. I'm here to help people. Um, and I have had conversations with people who do a higher volume and probably greater dollar amount of purchasing than most other departments do, um, and they're aware and they know it's going to be an adjustment for them, but they are open to learning.
Do you expect there to be a timeline introduced to go for this? Right now, someone goes out and agrees, has a handshake, decide we're buying this, now you've got a procedure in mind?
Possibly. I would say for the more significant expenses like this, over five thousand dollars, at the very least, um, people are coming to my office and talking to me about them and making me aware of them. Um, so that part won't necessarily change.
So no would probably be your leanings, there not gonna be much for change.
No, not.
Just because, all right.
Do we need to add something that says bids will be done on an annual basis or X function will be reviewed annually?
The purchasing policy? So I actually have a page in here, it's called version control. I think it's really important to, uh, have a date. Um, and then for clarification purposes, to Bud's point earlier, it could be that board members are getting this at some point and it may change a year later and no one is aware. At least then, you know, we have kind of a master document where we can show, you know, when changes were made.
And this really only affects a certain, I mean, it affects all the departments, but there's really just a few that are more, yeah, than others.
Yes.
Which, which Board of Finance thought, do we take a vote that we are in support of this or just let Anne Marie take it from now on?
I think we should have a motion to a court.
Okay.
Conditional. Assuming...
Assuming, yes, approval of ordinance, pending approval of the ordinance. And when is the ordinance gonna be approved? At the town meeting? The town meeting. And the ordinance is what, to ask people to up the ante from five thousand to...
I think it was a little bit more than that. We've got our old ordinance, your five thousand, but we're going to completely pull the old ordinance, the advertising and that type of thing, and replace it with, you're gonna have words around it, I see.
Yeah, I'll, I'll circulate something. The only version I had right now was in edit mode and it was terrible.
What do you expect the timing? I mean, do we just, would you, is it better that you deliver that next month to this board?
Yeah.
Is that tolerable, are you tolerant of that?
Sure.
Okay. All right. All right, so would you, can we take the vote next month and we see it? Or do you want to...
I didn't make a move like that.
Certainly, I think, knowing the Board of Finance is raising resistance to it. Okay.
I think it's longer, I personally think it's longer for two.
Um, longer for two. Although I do like the word improvidence up in the top. It's a word that you don't hear very often. I'm not even sure I've heard it very often, uh, I've heard it at all, so, cool. Is that from our friends at Essex? They are in, do not wish to lose improvidence?
It is from our friends at Essex.
All right, cool. All right, um...
When is your next meeting, Bud?
Anne Marie, while you have the floor, and before we begin the conversation about the new budget.
Well, I don't know that they have to recommend it. From, from a, like, Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes, yes.
Do you need to recommend that this be put to, that the ordinance change be put to town meeting? I don't think so.
No, I think that's just Board of Selectmen.
We certainly can, my, my thought, not meant to be lackadaisical, but if you're going to present us an ordinance at the next meeting, a proposed ordinance, that's when we would smile upon it, vote upon it, as opposed to taking two different votes. But I don't think anyone would care.
I, I just, I think technically the Board of Selectmen votes to update ordinances. I would circulate it to everyone, of course, and take everyone's...
That makes sense to me.
Right, I was just kind of commenting to see if we could get it on the, um, in the legal notice for the town meeting, which would be at the end of November, if you don't meet till the end of November. But if the Board of Selectmen approve it, you go forward with that. You guys would kind of rubber stamp it at your meeting, basically.
And, and what you said is very logical, except I'm very resistant to the phrase of this board rubber stamps. Just doesn't seem like that is our job to rubber stamps.
Yeah. Well, to, if you're all laying eyes on it as she's working on it, the other option is then to have a separate town meeting at a later date so that we wouldn't be able to squeeze it into the end of November.
A waste of time, but certainly this board is positive, then if the selectmen wish to move.
So if we don't have to vote on the ordinance, then why wouldn't we approve purchasing policy tonight, pending the ordinance approval by the Board of Selectmen? That way it doesn't wait till the end of November and you can get it on the town meeting agenda?
That's not the finished product, or it's just a draft.
Which?
That's right.
The policy?
Well, yeah, so we're looking, Anne Marie's looking for your feedback as far as the monetary and the language.
Oh, it kind of was.
No, it's just a draft. I'd like to see the fit, I'll, I'll vote on a finished product, not a draft.
Was there something you were adding to it?
The only change I'm planning to make is to remove the words, anything about verbal quotes.
My friend, I think to me that finished product would be what the town is voting on as a verdict.
To clarify, the vote would be taken on the draft and that would be, turn it into a final.
Unless you're proposing there's a change.
I, I think we can wait till the next meeting to vote.
You can.
I can start the requisition process now, there's nothing stopping me from that, so...
And you could certainly begin to impose, impose is a horrible word, implement this.
Yes.
Okay. Sharing with everyone, this is a test, okay, excellent. Um, excellent, good. Uh, I'm going to add you, let's do it now, while you are, while you have the floor. Um, at the last meeting, I, in which you nodded, so you didn't disagree, suggested the surplus we will have from the June, budget ending in June, was about three hundred and fifty thousand. You have been working on that and believe that number to be higher?
I do.
Okay. Higher, good.
Higher is good.
Okay, would you share, would you, and you do not, we will not hold you to it, hopefully no one will hold me to my three fifty. What, and give us a neighborhood that you think we should, would be in. Until the auditors come, it's unofficial, but give us a name for that.
I'd say closer to half a million.
Half a million, it's a hard, took it. Just good, most of that comes out of revenues or expenses, we're pretty much on budget, weren't we?
It's actually a bit both.
A little bit of both, all right.
Yeah.
All right, we shall look for it. And the auditors will be in, are they in yet? When will that all be filed?
They're not in yet. Um, I have started to send them some things electronically, probably not as much as they would like. Um, but they will be officially in, I believe, the first week of December.
December, which would mean that they would finish the audit, December, January?
Uh, the goal is always December thirty-first.
Yes.
We will see.
Okay, that is fine. All right, um, let's just comment that, uh, all right, the Board of Finance is participating in the Fire Department public hearings, where there has been four, at least four, maybe even more, okay? Is that your count, four? Two more, uh, on Thursday and Saturday, okay? Uh, the Fire Department, I believe, has tried to step up. They have sent postcards to every resident in town and they are, they have signs out. Very colorful signs, I tell you, they're so colorful, I can't read them. Uh, but anyhow, they have signs asking for support, so, um, they have had adequate attendance, okay?
And Bud, you've done a terrific job.
Well, it's interesting, uh, it, thank you very much. I don't get that very often, thank you very much. Uh, there is a letter from a, a consultant that estimates that building the Firehouse will be about seven point nine million. I have added contingencies to that, and I've used the catchy phrase, between here and there, there's a lot that can happen. Some of it good, some of it not good. I've added a ten percent contingency. It is our expectation, as we just chatted about with Tommy, that we would probably lean towards financing that with a direct loan from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, forty years. The last conversation we have officially had, they said four percent. I assume there should be downward pressure, but we will see. But they will not finance the working capital, so we will need to go and get an outside loan to do working capital. I have estimated that to be about a hundred and thirty, I have as, and, and we won't go into it because I have made assumptions that the, it'll take two years to build and here's the interest rate. I've added a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to the cost of the, of the building. I have estimated the, the building to be about eight million, nine hundred thousand. We've asked the town to approve up to eight million, nine fifty. So there is room, and I'm sure there's a technical term, there's a breathing room, a, a cushion or something between what the town approves and what I currently think it is. Uh, to finance that, four percent loan for four years, it's gonna cost the town about four hundred and eighty, four hundred and eighty-nine, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for forty years, all right? Um, the two fire trucks, the Fire Department has estimated two fire trucks of a million and a half, again, and I may be guilty of, uh, of emphasizing consistency. I put a ten percent contingency there. Uh, again, I estimate it'll take a while, we'll have to make progress payments, uh, that, that's about twenty-six thousand dollars. I've been working with a few finance, lease companies, municipal leasing companies, uh, and they have given me an estimate that we would be paying about, uh, what's my number here, about two hundred, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year for fifteen years. The longest they will, um, finance a dual lease is fifteen years for a fire truck. So, and then I took that, which the following task is very difficult, riddled with assumption. If we were to... If we were to look at the current grand bliss, uh, the average house, uh, with the, the help of Rob, and the average house is worth about $320,000. But that was done back in 1920, 1920, that's not true, 2020, alright? We do update things every five years, alright? Uh, if you were to look at current market rates, there is an estimate out there by Zillow that an average house in Deep River costs about, um, I don't know, 200, $350,000. So, I estimate the average house in Deep River, great danger in using the word average, because there's some above and some below, but we're going to use average. The, and if you vote yes to the fire or the house, it would cost you an additional $250, $250 a year. If you vote yes to the trucks, it would cost an additional $115 a year, alright? Total, if you vote yes to both and they're both approved, uh, the average house will pay about, um, $340, $350 more. Now, we should pause. While, uh, we just calculate if the firehouse, etymus esque, at itself, okay? It is impossible to say, here's one cost that we're adding to the town. But if you are tolerant that we can at least analyze that, I think it's $340, $350 a year on top of whatever else needs to be done, so, um. So, there you go, and it is, those who are voting early have already made up their minds on whether we should do that, so, cool. Alright, folks, if you are tolerant of spending a few moments, let's open up the current budget that Anne Marie was kind to send to us on Friday. And since, this is, what did we go, October's the fourth month, it's about 30, we should, a straight line spending would be, we'd spend about 33% of our budget, 66 unspent so far. Trying to get to where I want to go. Uh, I see nothing particularly interesting in the Selectmen's budget, although Carol, you were going to ask, why have we spent so much of our engineering, your engineering fees?
Uh, we spent some on Oak Ridge Drive.
Oak Ridge is spending a lot?
Some at Plowood.
Ah, okay. Was this just, I'm trying to get up to the actual number, we're pretty well out of that, so.
Spent some at the transfer station.
Yeah, I know you've been spending some on the transfer station. Do we need, do you need to think about replenishing that number? Do you need more dollars?
After I signed Jefferson's bills, I haven't seen the, what the line is right now. How much is left in there?
3,000.
Oh, 3,000.
Boy, you're talking, still working on my budget here. Uh, yeah, we had spent, engineering fees, we budgeted 15, uh, we've got 3,000, 3,500. And again, we're in the fourth month, though it does seem that, that may be something to focus on. Uh, elections are upon us. I believe we attempted to reflect early voting when we put this budget together. Um, this is one of a great tour through history. Last year was the first year we had early voting. I arbitrarily, before Anne Marie, stuck early voting as a line item in there. Uh, Anne Marie is not going, bad at picking up miscellaneous. Anne Marie is going to budget what to that, you're going to charge what to that line? If we have people who get paid to sit around and wait for voters to arrive, you're going to charge them to register on part-time. What are you going to put in the early voting?
Um, anything ancillary.
Okay.
That I don't feel we have coverage for in other line items, but it's.
Last year we bought a safe, do we need another safe?
I don't think so.
Let's get over it. Alright, folks, let's see our early voting. Uh, when I was a young man on this board, I used to think that every election cost about $3,000. Those days are gone, okay, so, we shall see. Um, town hall operations, sewer fees, we pay sewer fees for all town buildings, we must pay them in what, October? Does that make sense? Okay, although we do not take advantage of the two, alright? Um, and here's your town hall repairs. Budgeted 50, we've got $322 left. Anne Marie, you're just going to stare at that number and encourage us to stare at it until we figure out what we want to do with other costs?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Carol, you have not got, let's, let's do this. You have not got the ability to spend any more money on town buildings. Other than $322.
Right.
Unless this board is tolerant of overspending that lineup. Anyone have any thoughts? Do you could see it as a control or are you tolerant? There's adequate funds in the town hall operations. Does anyone have any thoughts to hold that number at the 50? Worth to let Carol, I assume from time to time, there's going to be a town building that needs something immediately. But, anyone have any thoughts on how to handle that? Right now the direction is open to Carol is, until you talk to us, you can't do it. Alright, let's, uh, let's talk about, um, town clerk seems to be fine. I'm not happy, okay, town clerk seems to be fine.
So, go back to that, though. You, Carol, again, OSHA's requiring you to do something with electricity in the basement.
Yes.
To put, but we've already overspent.
Yes, an excellent question.
That, we've got a mandate to fix something.
Well, you're, you used OSHA, okay, Anne Marie, you take over. We set money aside for OSHA in, it's not a money claim with your words. But if there is, and Carol began the conversation, there's work to be done in the basement because of the mold. That's the one that we do not have, she does not have authority to spend until we address it.
Yeah, we haven't spent anything on mold, but we have, but I mean, we haven't declared it as that. But the OSHA was the only thing she cited in the basement. She knew we had the mold issue and it was going to occur, but the electrical exit signs is what is lacking. So we do need to abate that by, we have some, some date in December or something.
And Dick will come and give you a number, give us a number, and I assume we'll have to do something very special at a town meeting on mold. If not even, I mean, some of the numbers he was talking about are a bit scary. We may have to go out and borrow to deal with that.
Or close off the basement. Seriously.
Well, I'm not sure, at least the conversation, I'm not sure you can stop everything at the basement. I think it comes.
We still have to cover the mold.
I believe it oozes up to the.
I thought we already got rid of the mold.
We clean well.
Current mold, but the dehumidification has to be improved here, we're going to get more mold.
That was one of the comments, he, I don't worry is on that. Talked about we may need a whole dehumidification system.
Right, and he hasn't gotten any prices yet or scope of work.
And he won't until Anne Marie gives him a form. Excellent, good, uh, alright. Jackie, you okay with that? You seem confused, and you should be, you should be confused.
Where was the OSHA money we set aside from where? Was that the money approved at the town meeting?
In Chover Capital.
Right, but again, it was only like $20,000.
No, 52.
Remember we had contingency we put in there.
Okay.
We don't have Dick's numbers yet.
Right, I guess that's my worry.
Alright, town clerk, Board of Finance, let's just stop the Board of Finance, have a brief conversation. Uh, we budgeted 26, 136, before we talk about exact, uh, that is the auditor fee. Anne Marie, help me out, is that their fee plus or just their fee? We paid, and you'll see, we paid 17 to date. There are us, town, us, school, us, WPCA that are auditing. To date, Anne Marie has paid all of it out of our budget and we will be reimbursed sometime in the future.
Correct, so their procedure is they generally will send us three bills. One in advance during their summer pre-work and the other two close to the end of the audit process. Um, I, and I believe this is how it's generally been handled in the past. We will pay that upfront fee ourselves and then after those two other bills come in, we will request reimbursement from the WPCA and school.
Seems to make sense, but do not panic, we've got money there, okay? Um, look, let me look at, let's go back to special services. Remind everyone, maybe, this is regional animal control, that's a front-end payment we made, correct? That is why we, uh, we have $8,000 left?
Uh, so, we have $8,000 left because in the budget season, we were presented with two different options. One for a tri-town regional animal control officer and one under the assumption that Westbrook may not join that contingency, which they have, which lowered the cost for us. We were advised by Essex, who is leading the charge, to budget at the higher rate.
Oh, cool, cool, so that 8,000 is dollars we may be able to retain. Oh, excellent, good job. Uh, let's use, under special services, talk about contingencies. And I'll just, while I got all kinds of thoughts that you've explained, they take it.
Uh, pumps.
Pumps, is it, no more dogs in here, all pumps?
No more dogs, all pumps.
Okay. Now, I'm going to bridge this. If everyone remembered during ARPA, we said we were going to buy the pumps at Oak Ridge, which if you drive fast, Oak Ridge are still sitting there and working, is my understanding, pumping.
I believe they're, uh, that they are coming to pick up one of them.
Well, they are.
I do think they are disconnected.
Well, that makes the conversation, I thought we were going to buy them and we assumed that what we had paid already would go towards part of the buy.
One.
One?
One.
Oh, we're on the line of one.
We're on the line of one, a bigger one.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Six and a half, whatever.
And that is in process, um, the vendor.
The buying of one is in process?
The buying of one is in process. The vendor recommended that we join a cooperative purchasing group, which is a great and an easy choice. Uh, and that contract is working its way through that co-op group's legal system. Once we are a member there, we should save roughly 30% on the cost.
You're very good, okay, and that would be our pump. How about the costs, just what we are agreeing to pay and what we put aside to pay? Is there a difference?
I haven't seen a comparison myself yet.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, that is a good answer. And so, would some dollars be returned to contingency? If we're going to buy and our assumption was what we've spent already is part of that cost? Would you move that to capital?
If I can get a document that details that out, then yes, I could do that.
Okay, alright. Um, we should stop for a moment at building official, who has 3% left, 4% left, standard 1.4. Remember what he is doing, Oak Ridge, he is up there often. He is at the school, so we should not be surprised if we are spending his budget after four months, virtually spending all of his budget, will continue to. When we get to revenues, we will see that to date, he's collecting what, over $60,000? So there is a blending. Anne Marie, is it your thought that what he will spend and what the revenues will be about equal? Or is there more potential revenues coming in?
Um, I think they would probably even out, certainly more so than now.
Okay, gotcha.
So when he's at the school, does the school pay for that?
No.
No, we pay for that.
But the school pays.
Yes.
School pays it.
Yeah.
Through permit fees.
Yeah, the permit fees get paid.
So, his cost is kind of baked into that permit fee, as I understand it.
That's how I understand it. Is that the best approach? I mean, could we build a school directly for that? For his cost? We would get it back in the third of the charge, but would we be further ahead if we built a school for that? I mean, he's up, he's on expense.
So we're paying for all of the work he's doing for the mold remediation that John Winthrop?
Yes, we are paying his wages at a prevailing wage rate. And then the fees that John Winthrop is paying us as building permit fees are significant relative to that project because of that prevailing wage rate.
So we're further ahead this way, in your estimation?
It, I think it sticks in one half dozen later. I think it becomes more administratively burdensome for building the school at his wage rate and then also collecting permit fees that are just small, I'm talking about.
So is a town employee working for someone who pays a fee for that? Just like if he was watching your app for current. Is all of the school dollars, you had them, you were hanging that number up and Amber does, you've abandoned that, right?
He recommended that I recognize all of them in revenue.
So that 60 recognizes all of it?
Yeah.
Okay. A story, good, okay. Um, let's see, does anyone else have any place they wish to stop? Uh, let's stop, and I will say stuff and no one has to comment. Let's stop at the police department. Here we are, four months in. Look, they have spent percent left, they got close to 82%, 83%. Close to a second part-time officer, 87%, 75%. If we are spending those kinds of dollars, I'm going to boldly suggest, this is where everyone gets to disagree with me, they are not patrolling the town.
Right.
Where are they? We supposedly want to have people, police on the road. We're not paying for it, it should be substantially lower. Where are they? Good question, say you. They're not out patrolling our streets if that amount of money is left over.
Can you answer? We said we're going to just go say this. Uh, yes, we've had many a discussion about that.
Yeah, we think so.
Carol, why are they looking to hire another police officer?
Uh, one of our police officers retired.
So it's a replacement, it's not in addition to?
Correct.
And?
In some sense, we don't care, here's the pool of part-time money.
We pay out stuff for them to be hired. I mean, it costs money to hire somebody in, and if we're not even using the people we have.
Well, you're, if somebody retires, you're replacing a part-time person.
But if the part-time person isn't patrolling the streets, then why are we hiring?
Right.
Why are we hiring another one?
Good question.
Because as I said, it costs money to onboard somebody. They have to go to training, they have to go through.
Uniforms, equipment, all that stuff.
Ahmed.
Oh, good point, they don't have that equipment, that's why I'm putting a lot of them.
Car.
Are they patrolling the streets more? Because I remember the discussion when Steve was here, they were doing more road jobs than they were actually patrolling the street, which they think, Dwayne, correct me if I'm wrong, Angus hired a couple more to have them patrol the streets. Steve admitted that they weren't patrolling the streets and I asked him, he can correct that, and he said he could. Has he been doing that? Because if not, law enforcement's primary goal isn't to work road jobs and make money. Their primary goal is to provide public safety. So if they're not providing public safety, do we really need to hire another one until they provide public safety?
I agree with you. I've talked to Steve about that, we want to do 16 hours of the guys.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear well.
I said, we have talked about that, so we're working towards that.
I mean, that's something he should be able to do within a week. I mean, that was several months ago, so, I mean, just to be fair, if we hired extra part-timers to patrol the streets and they're not patrolling the streets and they're working road jobs, what good are they? We can let them hire flagmen if we can't fill the jobs. That saves on cars, that saves on uniforms, saves on training. Yes.
I agree with all of the above, yes.
So, has that position been hired yet or can we put it on hold until we maybe reallocate the resources?
Uh, that position has been hired, as far as I know, right? Yes, he brought in to pick work. He's into community policing, just like Dan, so we have a couple that really want to be out in the field and talk to people. Like, he's a, he's going to be a positive addition. And I have spoken to Steve about getting more patrol hours, so.
Why are we under what we might want to have spent, do we know? The percentages are high, why are we under? They're not working their hours.
We're not paying them, so let's go with you, not working their hours.
Yeah, private road jobs.
It seems strange, doesn't it?
Well, they're doing a lot of private road jobs, which are no longer showing in this plan.
You know, they're doing that because they want to buy a new car. This just seems convoluted.
Well, they make more money, only do private road jobs.
So is it simplistic to say we hire police officers, full-time or part-time? We tax the town people for it and yet they're not patrolling the streets necessarily, but they're working traffic jobs. So they're not using the money that taxpayers have paid into the budget and have used. They're not doing their job, but yet they, he hired another person? They're not doing their job, but yet they, he hired another person?
So, does the full-time person work full-time in Deep River?
Yes.
So, we do have at least forty hours a week of police cut?
At least thirty.
Carol, who has last said today?
The full-time has thirty.
Do you, or does Steve?
No, that's me, and I've reached out to Troop F. So, we're, we're gonna follow up with that. But like I said, the new hire likes to do community policing, so I think he'll be good for the cleanup.
Do you have a commitment from Troop F as to how this situation will be addressed and rectified? Is it something that can be done in a month's time? Do we have any sense from them?
I do not.
Is it possible, when we contract with people, that if you're being contracted for part-time, are they contracted for like twenty hours, or a specific amount of hours? Each one of them? Like this new person you hired, how many hours was he contracted for? Approximately?
Um, I believe the assumption was, I'm gonna average it to be twenty-six hours a week.
Okay. So, my question is, shouldn't the contract say you are required to work twenty-six hours for the town in Deep River? And then, if you want to pick up road jobs on top of that, you can?
There is no contract.
So, our part-time people don't sign contracts?
Oftentimes, no.
Should we not? I mean, what business doesn't have employees sign contracts?
Even for part-time?
Even for part-time, yeah.
You go back to a policy.
To what?
To a policy. A policy that state that you have to work X amount of hours at your first time, first job, and then your overtime.
So, we just need a policy on that and then real contracts?
But, it is at the discretion of Steve, and Steve said he can correct that, so you're following up with Steve on that, so...
I'm just thinking in general, for any employee in the town, we should have a policy and a contract. That just makes sense for everybody.
It protects the town and protects the employee.
Yeah, I'd like to get something in writing. Emery and I have talked about that, because some weeks we have very good coverage, and then we have a week where there's a lot of private jobs, and all of a sudden, we don't see any of our dogs.
And it does vary from person to person. There is consistency on who you see not necessarily fulfilling our desires for patrol jobs.
That's just ridiculous. All right? It's ridiculous, we've got to get on top of this. Do you, would it be helpful if you had a subcommittee, maybe with a couple of our colleagues who are police people, to help draft a policy for you?
Well, we talked about having a safety, what was, we passed a board of selectmen meeting months ago, and have a, a committee to oversee. So, we just have to see what's required. The resident trooper cannot report to a committee, that's in his contract. So, we have to figure out how to...
Carol, I think that's in the newer language in that contract. I think if it's challenged, it doesn't clearly say that.
They can't report to a committee?
Correct. Especially after the police bill.
But the police are town employees, so they could report to a committee. It's just the resident trooper.
It has nothing to do with discipline, it would just be to, we have to allocate, are the citizens getting the best return on their investment? And I don't know how many guys are still here that were hired by Angus to do more patrol on the street, but if those guys were here, and when they were hired, it's like, hey, you're gonna cover the street at least so many hours, they should at least honor that, correct?
When Angus came to Board of Finance, I believe, a number of years ago, to add on to another part-timer, the stipulation was gonna be to have sixteen hours of coverage seven days a week.
That is correct.
With the four individuals.
And how many of those guys are still here?
Two, I think. I think Paul, I think Paul and Chris.
And are they meeting that?
I don't, I don't see others, I don't know.
We also don't see them, in terms of visibility. We have one car lettered. So, you don't know when anybody else is on the road doing any kind of patrolling, because you can't tell the difference between my car and a police car. Is that in process, Carol?
I have been told it is, yes. So, I've got to call the vendor myself and find out if it's in process.
I like to work my road jobs too, but my primary goal is what I was hired to do, and if that's what they were hired to do for the residents, and I think that's great that Angus did that, because everyone wants more police presence, right? More omnipresence, the bad guys drive through town and say, hey, I don't want to commit any crimes in that town, because there's cops everywhere. But if they're working more road jobs, you could hire fifty more guys tomorrow if you advertise, hey, we'll hire you, and you can work more road jobs at a higher rate of pay and not do patrol work. You could have fifty guys here, and you make a lot of money, but that's not, like I said, law enforcement's primary goal is to make money.
And the, um, cost of the road job, Emery goes into special fund now, right?
Yes.
Do you pay out of, do you pay out of that fund?
I do.
The wages, okay. But the difference is what?
Has the committee been forced?
The board of selectmen, we don't have any people on right now. I guess they push back about the committee and not being able to report to the committee, and what I'm just stating.
All right, we shall continue. Police, uh, police, we always stop the police protection, never mind. Fire Department seems to be doing fine. Emery, is it a random question? Why did you pay some of the pension? You paid six thousand out of the pension fund?
Yes, I did.
Code that wrong, is that what I meant?
No, I don't think so.
The fire marshal said that's the pension fund, we put ninety, seventy-five away. You spent six or...
Yes, but it's not just that. There's also a, um, life and AD&amp;D policy.
Really? Really, there was, there's an insurance policy?
There is.
All right, so, yeah, okay. Um, Fire Marshal's doing fine, I won't call everything out. Okay, all right. Uh, I'll leave it up to anyone else. Do they wish to stop anywhere? Everything seems fine. Let's go to revenues. Good news, we'll move to revenue if I can get this thing up. Property taxes, that's forty-three percent left, which means we collected sixty-some percent, which makes sense. In July, we collect half of our property taxes on property and all of our automobile. That makes a lot of sense. Proper taxes in arrears, we budgeted a hundred and twenty. Eighty-one has come in, and interest that is paid on, the corporate tax is not paid in advance. Fifty-seven, we, uh, we budgeted, and twenty-seven come in. So, I think dollars are coming in well, and we've already done this once, but we should offer our appreciation for Tommy, who brought in, as you can see there, ninety-five thousand dollars. Keep up the good... And this is just for town funds too, not capital funds. I'm about to call everything over. Let's do the following, and everyone should shake their head, and it makes no sense. We have collected ten million dollars, ten million one of revenues. If you remember a moment ago, we said we have spent six million. That's worthy of a celebration, except it is not a worthy comparison. Revenues come in, they'll come in in January, and expenses are throughout the year. So, while it is better to have ten million coming in and six million spent, it is not particularly good indicator of where we are. Does anyone ever have any additional questions, thoughts on our budget?
Where does the, um, special police stuff show up?
Not here.
Not here.
Emery, that's something we talk about from time to time. We should look at that. Um, because, for lots of reasons, we should look at, it's one of our responsibilities. We believe that is our money, our money. Board of Finance belongs to Town and Deep River. I'll bet you if you were to talk to resident state troopers, it's a citizen's.
I think it was very clearly delineated in the minutes that the Board of Finance...
Oh, Board of Finance will decide where it goes. And I think that gives him an incentive to assign some of the busy people to provide a road job, but we shall, we shall look at that in the future. Jackie, I don't mean to put you off, but that's the answer.
Maybe next month we can look at it?
Yes, it's been a kind of labor-intensive process.
I'll see if I can find out how that has been accumulating since we're not doing road jobs. The only thing, under other business, if you remember in Jackie's minutes, or, I was on the September minutes, we'll take Jackie's name off, okay? I think there was a list of parking lot stuff. Does anyone wish to comment on parking lot, wonder where we are, want to do stuff? Certainly, the, uh, the purchasing policy is number one on there, and we're making progress on that. Anyone else have any thoughts on parking lot issues they would like to talk about?
Yes, to go back to the police.
Excellent, good. Go forward.
Um, just a question. I had listed, um, under personal use restrictions, this is fleet policy to govern use of municipal-owned vehicles, including requirements for lettering of vehicles. That was October fifteenth, that was, I had that date down. I don't know if that meant lettering of vehicles in a fleet policy, or if it meant personal use restrictions, tracking of mileage, gas, and maintenance expenses.
I don't know either, so far we got one car marked.
I think it was the lettering. So, all the town vehicles are gonna be marked. We finalized the design, um, yesterday. Phil Schaler came in, and we're gonna do a town seal, that's gonna say, uh, Department of Public Works.
Was that a grant?
He pointed out that our seal, he had two designs for our seal, so this is rather interesting. If you look at that one, he said it's very odd that it says seal on it. So, he had two designs, one didn't have seal on it, and the other one had seal on it. And I said, yeah, you're right, that really is pretty funny that it says seal. So, it's, it's gonna be like that, but it won't say seal, and, um...
So, the one that you've done already is not a prototype for what the rest of them will look like?
For the police cars.
Oh.
With the DPW, all those, they're gonna get, um, we were hoping WPCA would too, but that's out of our jurisdiction. We can't force them.
But it hasn't been on their agenda yet.
If you have town policy on vehicles, why can't you force them?
No, I think we have, we have two board members of the WPCA here. It certainly could be put on their agenda or raised at the next meeting, which I think is the fourth of November.
At least in private conversation, I wasn't involved. I thought they agreed that they were going to take. Hey, we made a policy, this is a town policy. Town trucks should have...
Well, WPCA, we don't pay for the WPCA trucks.
They pay for them, but they certainly have trucks.
Well, I'll wait to the chairperson, ask him, put on the next meeting.
And I thought he was bringing two, but who knows what's going to happen? Okay.
So, but part of this, you're right, is, I have January twenty-fifth, is looking into the IRS requirements around driving vehicles that are owned by town, WPCA, fire department, or whatever entity, because there are IRS requirements.
That was actually, I set that question up for Emery, and I rushed through, I didn't give her a chance to answer. Is there extra money in the dollars that we set aside for our auditors? Can we ask our auditors to have their tax people do some minor research? It shouldn't take them much.
Let me take a look.
Okay, see if we have, and have them send a, uh, just a note on how we should be... The IRS, to your point, has a rule. If you have a town vehicle, that you, a smaller vehicle that you use for personal use, you have to reimburse them. We have let this go for far too long.
Yeah, because this could be a problem to the individual people that are driving them.
But is there, is there a stipulation if it's a municipal versus a private company who gives their manager a company car? Is there a municipal exemption to that?
And, and excellent. I do not know that.
It's a taxable benefit.
Seems like it's a taxable weapon.
So, it's a problem. I mean, if we're not...
If there's no carve-out for municipal or something like that?
Correct.
I don't know if there is.
I don't know.
I don't know if there is.
I heard, I didn't verify, but if it's for municipal work, then there's an exemption for it, but I don't know.
Okay, we shall. Oh, well, if Emery finds we have extra dollars, let's see what we can do. All right, let's start. All right, anyone else have any?
I have one more question.
Yes, yes.
The WPCA just recently collected taxes from the people who use their sewer lines. The notices came out from our, our town treasurer.
Tax collector.
Right, back here. Is, are we compensated for putting out those bills, for issuing the bills, collecting the money, notifying people that they're, they're being taxed extra now?
Let's take your question, you've got lots on there. We are paid, if you see in our budget, we are paid by the WPCA thirty. Do you wish to add monies to that from time to time? We were paid thirty thousand dollars, of which we pay for the tax collector to send those bills out, collect and maintain those, for Tommy to invest their dollars, and for Emery to do their books.
And that's ample compensation for that work?
Once again, I'll turn it over to Emery, but she has looked at it at our request, and I think your answer is yes, but you should take over.
I would say it's roughly accurate.
So, the hours our tax collector puts in are compensated, the hours you put in are compensated?
And I believe that's a marginal analysis. So, Dan and Marie is here, we pay for Emery, pay for our office, pay for a system, pay for a desk, I could keep on going. Uh, pay for the accounting system. Uh, same with the tax collector, same with Tommy. Then add an incremental cost to that for the WPCA. So, you're paying at the margin. They are not sharing in the accounting system. They are not sharing in other systems. It's at the margin. So, yes is the answer I want to give you. You had a couple of questions, keep on going.
Okay, and my question is, why do we do that? Why don't they handle their own taxes?
Well, and excellent. From day one, that has been in the authorization, that that is what they're, that we do. If you think about it, it is more beneficial to us. We have a consolidated accounting. We do all the accounting for the town. They are part of it, so they have to be part of our accounting. They want, by the way, to have their own accounting system. Think how expensive that will be for them to attempt to duplicate their system. And I do not want them handling their own ones. It's got to be a couple hundred thousand dollars, or you start adding accounting systems and people and that type of thing. So, the incremental cost controls their cost, would pass on to our employees, our town residents, is my answer. And we need the checks and balances, we need the separation as well.
The auditors have recommended to, if they ever were to pursue that route, that I would still need to maintain oversight, and I would have to perform control functions over that.
If they wanted to hire somebody, they'd have to report to Emery, because that's correct.
Why would you have to maintain oversight? Aren't they a separate entity?
It depends on how you look at it.
They are in their own budget. We don't, we do not determine their budget, monitor their budget, and they're now in, well, we'll leave that a show, but...
That is true, but they do operate under our federal tax ID number, and they are included in our annual financial report.
And they operate under our ordinances.
Correct.
So, technically, they have the, uh, the role, the responsibility, and the only right to set sewer usage fees. That is theirs. But under our ordinance, the town has the right, combination of Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, to oversee what they're doing.
And as Emery's going up, they're a service in our town, they are included in our financial reports. So, if they were on a separate system, we'd have to have auditors consolidated and everything else. It's a major cost that they did on their own incremental cost.
There have been issues over the past couple of years about bills not being paid on time, quality of follow-through, vendors complaining, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, the board is unhappy about that, and that is why they are looking at having their own payment capabilities. They deferred it at the last meeting to give it a couple of months' trial, because we obviously have a new finance directive, it's doing a great job, there's to be a new assistant, there's a new software program, all of this. But they're, they are very restless about the quality of service they've gotten to date.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I had something else for my questions.
Go forward.
But then I got cut off or something. Just a couple things. So, the Board of Selectmen, we'd like to look into getting a facilities, kind of a maintenance person. And our thought is it would be a part-time person. We'd come up with priorities for all the town buildings, and then it would be somebody that could actually do the work, kind of a handyman. And if they couldn't, if it was something bigger, then obviously, we'd have to come back for money and all that kind of stuff. But, so that's a position we're looking to...
Where would you find those boppers? Pay for that?
Well, that would be somebody who'd come back, but I don't have the hours yet, or kind of what our actual idea is. Sort of a part-time person that would, so maybe it has to wait until next year, we're hoping not, but next budget. But that's something we'll be talking to you about. And, um, more hours for our zoning, or a zoning enforcement officer is something we... And more hours for zoning or a zoning enforcement officer is something we'd like to consider too. But I will talk to zoning a little more about that, and now planning and zoning, that was here earlier, Tony wants to be with me to talk about that, so... Which is something that might get presented at your next meeting.
Okay.
Do we outsource the zoning enforcement officer?
We don't have a zoning enforcement officer, we have zoning through that TAIKE?
TAIKE.
TAIKE.
So they need more hours?
So they think that the issues, I'm thinking we need a zoning enforcement officer, but they think if they can have more hours, they would be able to get the job done. I see a void or a lack, some teeth in our zoning enforcement.
How many hours are they now?
They're, about six hours.
A week.
She works Mondays and Wednesdays, 9 to 12.
And when we had a zoning enforcement officer, how many hours did they work?
I haven't finished that research. We were talking Friday, and then just yesterday, Emery was busy, I was busy, we didn't get done, kind of looked that up. I think Kathy Jeppeforsen was our last zoning enforcement officer, so...
Kathy did everything. When Kathy knocked on your door, you knew Kathy was there. We do need someone of that nature, yeah. Alright, folks, I believe that ends all the entertainment for the evening, that I can present, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay. Hold it in the paper, play on. Alright, thank you.